All right, welcome everybody calling the regular school committee meeting on January 28th, 2015 to order at 6:16. January 28th and our historic snowstorm was January 27th. Just so everybody at home, if you're watching this in three weeks, you know why we're a little disheveled and maybe a little late. Anyway, we're going to jump right into new business. And the first item on our agenda is the FY15 second quarter financial update. George, take it away.
Okay, so you do have in front of you a second quarter financial report for FY2015. As I stated in the memo, the most significant issue that's developed this quarter is clear that our special education district tuition line item is going to be a deficit this year. And it appears to be a significant deficit, possibly nearing $400,000. This is obviously a very unpredictable line for all school districts on a regular basis. We here have been very fortunate, this line has been well managed, we haven't had any issues whatsoever with it. In the time that I've been here, I believe Michael's been here. Unfortunately, every so a while, things you can't control in general, those are usually things like student movements, service increases through IDP meetings, that type of thing, can change this line item dramatically and quickly. And that's the case here. So I think it's important to be forward. That's really the only major problem we have with the budget. The only other line item of some concern is our budget for long-term substitutes. We've just had a normal, a normally high number of leaves of absences this year amongst our staff, which we had to have permanent substituting for. That however, is a much lower number, obviously, it's just percentage wise to that line item is, it stands out as being a bit of a concern. But that can be managed with our overall salary budget for a couple different reasons. Mainly because sometimes the people they're permanently substituting for, some of their leave is not paid, so therefore, we go back and fill in some of the money that way and that type of thing. So that's a bit of an issue, but it's not the issue that the tuition item is. The good news is, the balance of the budget has no other major significant deficits that sometimes come from line items that are volatile, such as health insurance and energy, which are obviously two, that's often the case. We're fine in those areas. So by end of the fiscal year, of course, we have to balance out deficits. I believe that we'll be able to identify funds to allow us to do that this year luckily. Because there are two areas of surplus that I've identified in the district overall. First being salaries, is it looks like there's about a one-half percent salary surplus district-wide. That's not, actually, you know, not much at all, obviously relatively speaking, but dollar-wise, it's a decent amount of money to help us fill in that $400,000, approaching $400,000 deficit, even though it's a small overall item of surplus. And hopefully that will remain, we'll have to keep an eye on that. And the other surplus we have, again, is in health insurance. We've done very well in health insurance the last couple of years. It looks like there will be a surplus there. What we won't be able to do properly is what we did last year, is put money into our reserve account for post-employment benefits, but it should help us be able to balance out the budget, which we of course have to do. So those line items, of course, are personnel-driven, so we'll have to keep an eye on them, but we're halfway through the year, so there's some reasonable level of confidence that that will be the case. As I stated on the special education, you'll see that in the budget that Michael talks about, is that this is not a one-term thing. The changes that occur to make, to make this happen are changes that we would anticipate structurally to be built in with our service delivery plan next several years probably. So you're going to have to adjust our budgets going on this year, but going forward to be reflective of that. So that's where we stand after six months of 2015.
Do you want to have any questions? Moving along, related, sort of, transfers.
Yep. Usually, as you know, we transfer money to balance our control line item, our line item accounts at the end of the school year, fiscal year, which happens to coincide with the school year. But this year, I wanted to do at least these transfers now. These are the transfers which are balancing out our salary line items. The reason this is the case is we had some money in the salary reserve within the budget, and we wanted to make them, and put them in the proper place to reflect the collective bargaining agreement, which is in its first year. That way, you'll see that when you, when we look at the budget, you'll see the historical amounts in the right place, so you can make comparisons of costs of items from year to year. So the list of transfers that you have tonight is a request to do that, to balance out our salaries among the control line items. It's only a salary balancing, there's no other, no other policy or spending issues in this transfer that would happen at the end of the year. But this is just simply a transfer of salary money to reflect the collective bargaining.
And doing it at this time of the year allows us to make sure that when we print the budget proposal in the Excel spreadsheet, you're, you're going to be comparing actual to actual.
And is there any, any reason to sort of summarize this, or just, we have the document in front of us and we'll, we need to vote?
Yeah, I think it's been, I think it's been explained that it hasn't been.
Yeah, it has, I mean, I. Anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah.
Sure.
So transferring monies into salary for this year?
Yep.
So what did collective bargaining have to do with this year, so?
So this is the very first year of the new collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah.
So we didn't budget the mon, we didn't know what line item accounts to budget the money in last year.
So we have a salary reserve that we want to disperse back into salary lines.
So when you finished collective bargaining, it actually was effective for the 1415 year?
Correct.
Any other questions or things to talk about?
And so these particular items, already all these on here, I don't know how many there are, those either increased or decreased, so these were all affected?
Yes.
And we need our stamp of approval. The question did come up. How do these transfers then affect the sped out of district, which we're sort of going to be whacked with anyways?
Right, there's no impact, different than what I stated.
So we're still going to have to find one?
Yeah.
What happened there?
I'd have to look at it, I can look it up.
This is the first year of enrichment coordinator fully in this budget?
Is that one enrichment coordinator?
There must be more than that in that line.
Yeah, yeah, there's more than that in that line.
I can look it up.
Otherwise, I want her job.
Yeah, right, I want that job. Oh, you know what else it is? It's the ELL, admin is kind of a, it's kind of the wrong term for it. We've had an influx of English language learners this year, and so we had, we've almost doubled our student population from what we ended last year with this year. So we had to add time to, we had a half-time person, so we had to make that person full-time of a teacher, and so, so that we could cover the amount of time that's required by law.
So a half an FTE to a full FTE?
In the assistant as well. So we had a half-time teacher that go to full-time, and a half-time assistant go to full-time to cover the high school.
At the high school?
So the teacher is, is doing, supervises the assistant and primarily pre-K through eight teaching, and at the high school, we have a instructional assistant.
That's about $40,000.
And so, I don't know if this is the place to bring up my previous request, but I still haven't seen that document.
The what document?
The central office.
Right, it's in the budget FY16 budget folder on the drive.
In this packet?
It's not in this package, but it's on that drive, so if you sort of backed out to the original, where you would click on the link, then the folder's there.
Hmm? Oh, it's, okay, because I looked on it, right?
Yeah, I haven't looked at everything yet in the process, I think it's got the link and all that, we get to listen.
So, all right, so, and I'm, we're doglegging on this, but it relates to that, so, so I have, so what I really would like to see is just a document that, so I've got to go through and look at all?
Oh, do you want a document just list of positions?
Yes, what I've.
Oh, I'll, we'll do that tomorrow, I'll do that, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted the job descriptions.
No, I don't want to know what the job descriptions are, I just want to know, this is the function, this is the role, this is what it does, just a bullet.
We'll have that for you.
And then a total for all of them, and then if we could go back 10 years and look at, based on the population of students growing, how has the central office grown?
Mm-hmm.
So we can do a compare.
Yeah.
And I think I really need to see that as we get into the discussions.
Okay.
Thank you. The important thing, from my understanding, is that the total line here in the increase-decrease column, the bottom is zero.
Zero, correct.
And so, in my mind, that makes this all okay, I mean, because there's no impact whatsoever.
Right.
To the budget.
Correct.
Because the, the net is, is zero.
Right, it's where we're spending, where's this, needing more.
And I just need a clarification of what, where we are. The sped out of district?
Mm-hmm.
It's a decrease by 300,000, but we have less than 300,000 after the transfer, sorry, after the transfer balance?
We have more than 300,000 in there.
Well, I've got year-to-date, which is almost.
Right, we'll do, we'll do the final tally of special education out of district by the end of the year. Remember, we, we generally do all transfers at the end of the year.
Right.
And this is just to clean up for salaries.
Yeah, but if I'm, it just doesn't make sense though, because I hate transferring, but it looks like we want to see this again, because we've almost, the current budget, and we've all, we've spent, year-to-date, we've pretty much spent it all, and yet we took $300,000 out of it.
Right, so we will, we'll see this line again, that's correct.
Why would we do that, though?
So that we can address the salary line, so that you don't see a, so that we can have the salary line balanced based on what, where we're spending the money for salaries.
So the total that we had to transfer is how much?
No.
It's about, it's about $662,000.
So what did we, the collective bargaining, we had to find $600,000?
Which is approximately 2% of this $30,000 budget.
And we have to do this now, because, I'm sorry?
We don't have to do this now, but by doing this now, this will allow the budget documents we're going to provide to you next week, or later this week, or whatever, just sort of provide them, to have the numbers in the right areas of where they're being spent, so that you have better apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, so that we say that we want an adjustment.
We haven't approved adjusted, we're only going up so, what percentage?
Well, it's accurate, if we don't make these transfers, it won't be accurate.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion? No, you don't want me to do it?
I just, I move that we approve the transfers as described in the memo from George King with the attached document identifying the line items that are transferring both increases and decreases into and out of.
Give me a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, brings us along to the really exciting stuff, which is the FY16 proposed budget. Take it away, Michael.
All right, so, because we were waiting for the transfers to be approved, we'll finish the book with all the Excel spreadsheets, we'll try to get that out tomorrow, and so that'll be online for the public and for the school committee to see as well. Tonight, I'm giving you a 50,000-foot view of the proposed budget.
And we don't have this view?
You don't have that there. So, as usual, when we build our budget, we try to start from zero. There are some known expectations, we have statutes that we have to follow that require us to have funding for different elements of our budget. So it's not really zero, so we call it a modified zero basis, but I do ask all of the administrators, directors, principals, assistant principals, to work with their staff, their school councils, to contribute to the process, so that we have a built budget that is based on the student need, whether it's directly from student performance, or school district, school improvement plans, or in our case, at this level, for the district improvement. So this is a blueprint for our success as we're going forward. We define success in terms of a number of different factors, these are not all of them, but as we look at things like college acceptance, SAT performance, and MCAS performance growth, and MCAS accountability, these are elements of, and objective elements, measures that the public can see, the school committee can see, we can see, and there are also, these would be the hard measures, there are also the soft measures, there are the interests that children have, the exceptions that they have, the exceptionalities that they have, and the interests that they have and exposed to through the enrichment that we provide each and every day. As we look at some of the data for our students, our college entrance is 96%. We are benchmarked it about five years ago, so that we could have consistent data throughout this presentation. So our college entrance for two and four years is up slightly from 92% in 2009. Our AP presentation, our AP data, we have almost 90% scoring of three or better, which is the qualifier for college entrance. In college use, it was 86% in 2009, so we're going in, in the right direction there. I should point out that something that we talked a lot about when we reviewed this is that there's also the, the data that we can show where we have many more kids today taking AP exams than we did five years ago, predominantly because we're offering more AP courses today than we were five years ago. NRS, yeah?
Hope you're in there. I have a question.
Okay. So our, NRS AT average, which currently is 1715, this is for the three different tests, and the mean for Massachusetts is 1530, and our students earned 1697 in 2009.
Do we know if we're up there, though?
If we're up there.
You're saying that in all these other, you're saying we're up a certain percent, are we actually up, because the mean, I mean, I don't want to.
So our, there's, so our students were 1697 in 2009, so we've improved almost 20 points in five years.
Got it.
As we look at our MCAS performance, we teeter on the top 25% of the state, but over the last five years, if you look at our scores, adding, subtracting gains and losses, we are up overall by four points in the LA, five points in math, and two points in science and tech from five years ago. And this is, these are district scores, so these are all of our grades compiled together. If you were just to look at our high school schools, scores alone, they'd be, they have, would have a much better trajectory overall, because they're overall much higher than the district is. Where do we want to be? This is something that, this is the, the work that the school committee has to work on. Some areas where we talked about, I think we all agree that because it's part of our district improvement plan, we want to be a Level 1 school district, based on the accountability system by the state. And this is, this requires that every one of our schools reach that level, and we're, we are very close in each one of the schools that are currently Level 2, and so I, I think we're in the right trajectory to, to get there. As we look at comp schools in terms of college acceptance, I think the direction we want to go is to get closer to 97% overall. For scoring on AP exams, again, looking at some comp schools, we want to get closer to 98% of our students that take them, scoring a three or better. And for SAT scores, again, for total of the three tests, we want it to climb to 1775 for our SAT scores.
As an average?
As an average. And then, as a district, to be, for our advanced or proficient, which is the score that we saw earlier in that slide, for all content, we want to be at 95%, because that would be putting us in the comps of those communities. Now, to get there, it takes innovation, it takes investment. We are working on several different areas and several different fronts, and I think that the things that we're working on will, will help to get us there and contribute to get there. We have to weigh everything to be able to make it happen, and there are a lot of decisions that have to go in before that. We're looking at what the, originally what the governor had proposed, the former governor had proposed, was universal preschool and all-day kindergarten, and a, a plan to invest in it. Global education, making opportunities for our kids to have exposure to courses and to standards that would expand our cultural awareness, our, the customs and geography of our foreign lands, and the language at the middle grades, something we used to have, but disappeared during the financial crisis of over a decade ago, and has, has not returned. Collaboration time, we heard a lot about this in our recent conversation with our teachers, and this is something we've wrestled with each and every year, and we know that we have to have more time for our teachers to spend, both horizontally, that is, with the team of teachers that they teach with, but also, and across the district, at the pre-K through eight level, but also vertically. We need teachers to get together so that they can see what they're doing, what, how it impacts curriculum and assessment and instruction. And one-to-one technology, this is part of our district improvement plan. This is something we've been working on and building toward for a number of years, and building the infrastructure. We see it necessary to, to really make technology fully a part of learning for kids, is to have a, a device in their hands and at use for teachers who plan for it and know that they will, the students will have the device in hand. We've been working with interactive whiteboards, and for grades three through eight, we would like to continue with the whiteboard initiative for K through 2. We had a lot from our feedback from our teachers, when we thought that we were going to just stop at grade four, and the feedback was that we really should continue it, and so we've, we've changed that and gone back to looking at ways that we can have that a part of our plan. And then, to continue with the, I should say tablet initiative for pre-K through 2, we have been looking at Chromebooks primarily for grades three through 12, and for the younger kids, we've been working with Apple and the iPad, and we've had a lot of success introducing them on a smaller number, and over time, we'd like to continue with that initiative for pre-K through 2. So the kinds of investment which come down to money in the budget that you're about to see, we think the three areas that continue to be the areas where we have to continue to invest, which is where the additional funds need to come from or come to. Our response to intervention activities that we're doing around alternative education options for our high school. We still think that there are initiatives that we need to explore and develop for options for our kids to be a truly comprehensive high school. We need to be able to make sure that all kids have exposure to courses and programs that keep them in school and career or college-ready upon graduation. Enrichment, we invested two years ago with a lot of focus on developing enrichment for after-school and during our, our vacations. We're now at a place where we're building more and more enrichment opportunities for kids during school. And remediation, again, a focus of work that our principals and teachers are doing within the schools for all students who need to be challenged for success on a daily basis. The technology plan is definitely focused toward developing opportunities for tools to be in the hands of learners. We know from our practice, from research, that the more kids have time with technology with their teachers, the more likely they're going to require it, and the expectation to use it is a big part of making it a reality for kids to use it in a positive and productive way for learning. And then the infrastructure, if you're going to have these kinds of options for kids, you've got to have good infrastructure, it has to work. We need to make sure that teachers are not distracted from their work with kids on a day-to-day basis, and so we need to make sure that infrastructure is there. And that can look different at different types of initiatives that we have ongoing. For technology, clearly a big part of that is making sure the tools work. But also, overall, the infrastructure in terms of the hardware and the backbone of the sites itself. So at our high school, we're proposing that we have an additional 2.0 FTEs for professionals. We're looking at the best way to place them. I, I will point out that part of our process is to hear from what the principals want and what they feel they need, then when the whole package gets packaged together, I try to put together a comprehensive plan, so that we can, I can present to you what I think we're ready for, as well as what we are, what I think is going to be something we can afford to do. So this is, and you will hear this when they present to you as well, if, in the conversations. So, for example, at the high school, you know, if he asked for four positions, and it's now to two positions, one of the things that he's now going to have to go back to is look at, well, where are the most important places to put those two FTEs? Additionally, we're asking for one additional instructional assistant at the high school, and this is to team with our academic support center, it is to work with our students, our at-risk students, and to help administration and our interventionists working with students who struggle to stay in class. At Center School, we are asking for an additional special educator, three through five, this is to continue with our new model of RDI, to have the best-trained individuals to provide special education services, and a 1.0 math specialist. At Florence Sawyer, same idea, 1.0 special educator, six through eight. Again, this matches the model that we started at both Luther Burbank Middle School and Hale Middle School. And at Hale Middle School, we have another year of a large class of 113 students, and so we're asking for a grade six-plus educator that will be built into the schedule that we've done before there, and we've done it at Florence Sawyer School, when we've had large classes. Special education, so this has been an area of conversation throughout our meetings at. So this has been an area of conversation throughout our meetings at the administrative level and meetings with interventionists, and obviously our special education director. We're asking for an additional team chair. This is a very critical position. This is a school psychologist who is trained then to work with parents and teachers, to assess students who are being recommended for evaluation. And this person works to work with parents and the student and the teachers through the process of the developing, are determining whether special education is required, and then developing the IEP, the Individual Education Plan, as necessary. This is a critical part of the time that all of the folks that work with special education need to have someone who's leading that conversation. Five years ago, we had 426 approximately special education students. We're now up to 487 students and without an increase in the team chair positions.
How many?
Over the last five years. A big chunk of that is that we added preschool. But nonetheless, they're here now, and so that's definitely a big part of what we do. The work that the team chair does is critical to making sure that we identify the right services for children, work with parents to explain and educate what, why those services are appropriate, and then build the appropriate plan as the law. And our educators recommend to do so. So this position also will give our existing team chairs, as well as this person, more time to work with our staff, which we've seen eroding because more and more time is on the evaluation of the students. And so that's been a critical piece that we see missing or sort of disappearing because the priority is on the evaluation. We're also asking for 1.0 related services. This would be OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy. And again, depending on what the actual cases require, by the end of the course of the year, the special education director would make a determination of what portion to hire as an FTE. It might be 0.2 OT, 0.4 PT, and 0.4 speech, or some variation on that theme. In technology, something we've been asking for and talking about in a number of budget years, it just hasn't made it through the process, whether at my level or at the school committee level in the past. We're asking for an additional technology repair staff. Again, we've increased the number of units. We are asking for more in this budget year as well. And it was reiterated, I think, at our forum, at a plurality of tables, that we need to be able to make sure that our staff have working tools and working infrastructure. And obviously, it's a time-sensitive requirement. And when you have a good system, which I think we do, in terms of the repair process and the work order process that we use, it really take, it's a, it's a staff-intensive process. In order to improve the response time, you've got to have people to be able to be there and to do that repair. In the technology department, we do have resources in the proposed budget to double our fiber capacity. We've certainly heard it, although we have enough at our current rate. As we're looking at the one-to-one initiative, we think it's necessary over a five-year span to be able to double it. That will get us to be able to absorb a one-to-one initiative that would go from grades eight to 12. We're beginning eighth grade because as we evaluated our use of technology in classrooms today on a, on a whole-class basis, the recommendation from the principals is that our eighth grade are the most users, are heaviest users of technology on a class-by-class basis. And so the, essentially, the capacity is greater there, but we will have a PD plan for them. But we know that in order to move to full classes having technology in their hands, we know we have to do PD for teachers. And so we would be able to have a year window to really work with our high school teachers and really help them understand how to teach differently with technology in the hands of kids. And one of the things that we've recognized as, as we've tried to grow our BYOD, our Bring Your Own Device, plan, is that, and this is feedback from our teachers, is that because each student has a different device, it's very hard to have continuity of expectations around what students could or could not do in class while they have them. It's one thing to ask them to do something outside of school when they might have a different device to use. But we also want to continue with our BYOD because we do think that that has some merit. And there are some things that we still can do, especially for our own staff. So that's something that we're, we would continue with, at least for the foreseeable future. In our teaching and learning conversations and related to technology, we recognize that our technology, especially at the high school, has not kept up with the availability of technology in science and mathematics. And so we're proposing that we have a, we currently have five major labs at the high school. We would propose we essentially go to a sixth one, although the sixth one would be mobile. And that lab would be dedicated for science and math so that they can start to load the kind of software they need for their particular courses. Especially in the last couple of years, we've been adding computer science courses, and we need to have the technology that can work with that software. And something that we will, will do internally, this is not a cost item, but it's something we did here, again, through the feedback loop with our teachers that we held with all of you the other week, is, and that is, we have an instructional technology specialist. That is a tech, essentially a tech teacher for teachers in every one of our buildings. And what we recognize is that there's still work that needs to be done to help our teachers understand how to use technology safely for their, for their own good, so that they can make sure they protect what they create and what they're using with kids. But also, on the creative side of things, how to use technology. And so they'll be a big part of that PD plan that we'll infuse into the work for, for our high school staff for next year. Just as a bit of a tangent that, because it's been in conversations that we've had around PD, this is the competing demands exercise that we go through every year around PD. Because I think some of the strands of conversation that we have with our own teachers in that forum was that they would like more flexibility to plan their own PD. And we would love to give that to them, but we have a very finite amount of dedicated time, that is time that they have to be there in PD. And things like making sure that they are ready for an initiative like having one-to-one requires us to say, you've at least got to take whatever it's going to be, four hours, and you're going to dedicate to being trained to how to teach with technology in front of you, in front of every student. And that's the competing demands that we struggle with. We would love to have enough to be able to sort of meet everything that is told to us by the state that we have to do, everything that we see as good practice that the district would like to do. Principals have interests that they would like to explore at their individual schools. And then, of course, teacher desires based on their own self-reflection on where their strengths are, where they'd like to grow more. And that's the competing demands. And so aside from the budget process, we'll be talking more at a future meeting about a proposal around looking at how to build that collaborative time. For curriculum, instruction, and assessment, we've had a committee working on our science curriculum. We should be ready to launch this summer. So we will have new materials purchased for that curriculum. We're finishing up options. We've, we've been working on our math curriculum the last couple of years. We need to make sure that we have materials, and we've been waiting for them. This is, this is one of those circumstances where the publishing companies have not been as quick to design materials for math especially. And so we, we've chosen purposely to wait until they did. And so they're, they're coming online, and we're looking at them and exploring them through different piloting options that we have now. There'll be work that, there'll be work that we'll have in our health curriculum. We've started a health review. We have some interim recommendations. And one of them is to have sort of a revisit of the health curriculum to base it on a, still yet to be approved by the state, but one that we think they're going in the direction of. And so we'd like to do that. And so that's, there's time in the teaching and learning budget for that. We know that assessment is critical to good instruction. But one of the things that we are also recognized as different agencies, the state, district, school-based, we are data-rich and information-poor. That is, we have a lot of data coming into our, our systems. And now we recognize to do a good job, even a great job, of analyzing it. We need to narrow our focus more on the areas that we want. And so we are, we have a committee looking at, right now, to refine and reduce the amount of assessments that we're, we're requiring of students. And it's, it's going to have some expectations around a new assessment tool that we're going to have to purchase in order for us to, to be able to do it. And so that work will continue as well, choosing what that looks like.
I'm just curious, buying a new assessment tool to figure out how to use our assessment tools?
No, no, no. So, for example, right now, we use AmesWeb. And after using it for now five years in total, we, we recognize its limitations, and we really think that we need to look at something else.
So we're getting rid of it?
We're, we're probably going to get rid of it. I'm not a hundred percent sure. What's that?
It won't be a wash?
The first year is usually an implementation year, it costs more. But it would be, it should be a wash as on the annual cost because it's usually a per pupil cost.
Are they compatible in any way?
We haven't looked at titles, so I couldn't even tell you what, I couldn't even tell you that.
So did we somehow jump into AmesWeb without doing due diligence?
No.
This is not a long time.
We looked at three, three different tools at the time. And AmesWeb was the most cost-effective. We liked it a lot. We still, we still like it in terms of its length of time that it takes for kids. It's just doesn't, it doesn't give us enough options to drill deeper for certain kids that we recognize that there are concerns and, because it's, it's just a screening tool.
So would it be possible, would we might, would it be possible to find at some certain time that this new tool that we haven't quite named yet might be able to get very different assessment also?
It's possible. It's possible. And there is, there is talk at the state level for the same type of conversation. And we're hoping that, that they're going to lighten up their requirements as well.
So this talk at the state level, are we going into a beta?
Are we going into a beta?
Is this going to be like a, like a pro run? Am I going to change it again in a year or two?
Well, we're not going to rush into anything. And so we're going to monitor.
Is it going to be by next year?
Well, it'll be next year, sometime during the course of the year. Couple of sort of benchmark dates that we're going to look at. Obviously, the fall will be critical because the state is going to vote, the state board of education is going to vote on whether or not to move away from MCAS. So whatever that decision is, then at the federal level, they're looking at the Elementary Secondary Education Act. And there's a big push to move away from state requirements of every-year testing. And so if that happens, that will be a huge relief to us as well.
But it opens up our assessment, which means more training, more special development, more burning.
I'm just saying more of a different, yeah, it will. Whenever you get anything new, you're going to have to spend some time teaching people how to use it.
So we've just created a whole new business?
I don't know if we've created a new business, but it is our work. And then the opportunities for collaboration, we've, we are very much engaged in Rubicon Atlas, which is our online curriculum. And we're moving forward with that, and that's going very well. We've also done a lot with Baseline Edge. We've worked with them a lot, and they are very cooperative with us in terms of really helping to make our tool exactly what we want and what we need. And so that tool has definitely been a big help to us as we've moved through this first year with it. On the early childhood front, looking at everything that we have thus far, we've been in this for now five months. It's really too early for the data to make a final, final decision. So, and it's also not the right time financially to make any major changes to full day. And we certainly heard last year loud and clear, choice is important. So in this particular budget, all we're planning for and proposing is that we go into a second year of our pilot, so everything stays the same as is, with some feedback from parents and teachers and administrators for those minor changes. But the essence of what we're doing would stay the same with a full day and classrooms with half-day or partial day, we're calling it now, because they go to noon being a part of that class. So for that innovation, for those investments, the budget that I'm proposing is up 5.07 percent. The budget drivers that you'll be seeing and looking at when you see the more specific documents, as we talked about earlier, the auto district placements will be a definite increase. We'll explain this in more detail when we talk about special ed during the breakout sessions on the 11th. But as you'll see very quickly, that what we're, what we're experiencing because of this year, we're, we have, we're already seeing that we have increased costs. We are usually able to do a prepay before the end of the fiscal year by law for our, for our collaboratives, some portion. We're not going to have that flexibility this year. So all of that prepay is going to be in next year's budget. And that's, that's a portion of the issue that we're facing. As well as families moving here with complex needs for their children and meeting those obligations and finding the right placements for them has, has required us to look at other options. The transportation contract, we are definitely, our, our contract with First Student is going to be up June 30th. We're going out to bid. We'll go through that process. We do have an option year with them. We're certainly exploring that as a possibility, but we wanted to see what's out there. But what we're seeing that's out there already, just from different pieces of information, makes, makes it look like we've had a very nice run for the cost of the contract that we've had. And so we'll, we'll be monitoring that carefully. Right now, what we have proposed is our, is about 4 percent. And so we'll see what that actually turns out to be. Personnel, next year will be the second year of the three-year contract, so that will be a driver as always. And then the new personnel that I reviewed with you tonight, and you'll see in more detail tomorrow when you see the worksheets, that's always a cost. That's, that's our flexibility. If we don't invest in those new personnel, that's a place where we have some options to move. What's in our capital budget, and so this is focused primarily on our high school, is that we have an option, and it's for, up for discussion a little bit later tonight in this agenda, the modular classrooms, the setup for those two spaces. If we do agree to take them from the town of Stowe, they will require setup, and that setup is expensive because they do have to be put on pillars. They do have to be connected to all fire systems and communication systems. And they do need a connection to the main building that would, you know, make it weather-resistant as we did at Pompo. So to mirror what we did at Pompo for that setup that the town of Stowe paid for, we have to now mirror at the high school for the, for a similar setup. The tech department, we're, we have a small amount in there. They are currently in the media center. We're proposing that we move them out of there and move them into this building here so that we can so that we can give, give up more space for, for the high school. They're not really going to be able to be used for classrooms. One could be a nice conference room. But there are, there could be a nice office out of it. It just would give them some flexibility that they don't currently have.
How do you cover IT?
IT.
So are you going to move all of the servers and everything?
Servers will stay where they are because they, they need to be there.
So they're just going to monitor them remotely?
Right, they do that now. Yeah, we've invested too much to move the servers.
So where would you move here?
We have the 1922 building that's always been part of our makeup of our plan for central office as part of what Bolton's plan is for enrollment growth. So, is to move into the 22 building. So it's the third floor of the 22 building.
I thought a couple of years ago, we were looking at that portion of the building to expand classrooms.
No, it's this portion.
Okay.
So, if, if the enrollment pushes up, it's where the ramp is. It's down, the pillar.
So, that would free up space in the media center. Really, the usability could only be for maybe a conference room?
It could be a conference room. It could be a small, it could be a small classroom. It could be a special education space. Pardon me?
Like a breakout?
Could be a breakout space. So it just gives them some flexibility that they don't have currently. The school capital plans are with each of the towns. Bill Clary's been working with them and meeting with, with them. And we'll have final information for that by the 11th in terms of what they, what they're leaning toward and what they're deciding as far as that goes. On the revenue side of things, obviously, we're a bit in state of flux. With the new governor, he has until March 4th to really make his proposal. There really is not much in the way that we could look for relief from Chapter 70. We aren't a district that has received a lot of Chapter 70 overall in the last 12 years. So I don't look for any particular changes that would change that overnight. Regional transportation is definitely still a variable that's in play. The decision by the prior, previous governor, Deval Patrick, to cut $18 million does hamstring approximately $250,000 for us for next year. If we, if that cut does not happen, we will have $250,000 more to put into revenue. If it does happen, then it won't be there. So that's a variable that we're watching very carefully. A fairly positive decision by the new attorney general is that she is going to review the action by the governor, former governor, and she will give the legislature feedback on that. So that is something that the Association of Regional Schools has worked on. And we've been able to elevate it to her attention through our legislators. So I'm very pleased about that. And then something that we're obviously mindful of, our declining school choice revenue. This is something that is going to impact us as it continues to go down. So right now, we had a high of 230 in the 1213 school year. We're right now at 168. We have 81 students going out. So that number is decreasing a little faster than we had hoped. And that will definitely be a noticeable revenue reduction for us.
Still a long time.
How do you know when kids say they're going to another town's school choice, and we're paying for them school choice, but then they move to that town?
Well, we audit everything we get. We get a list from the state and we go through a multi-step process.
So if it's in the middle of the year, you don't find out?
No, we do because we don't get the list in a year. So the schools are on the obligation to report it. But what happens is we go through the list. First, we check with the town clerks, make sure we're able to do it, and we drill it down more and more. And by auditing that list, we've saved us some money. Last year, the year before, we got up to $38,000. You know, get credit to us by that. So we check it very closely.
And we follow up, you know, you know, that process is obviously time-sensitive because we have to wait for the DESI to give us the list and so forth. But we do follow up when people give us information that, you know, we can then follow up and take, take action. So that's helpful as well. We are going to have a full breakdown of each cost center on February 11th. And that'll be starting at 5:00 PM. And so each cost center director or principal will be here to be able to talk to their specific requests that they've made. And, and then obviously, there'll be a block of time at some point toward the end to have some questions. And if there are directives in terms of activities you'd like us to follow up on before our next meeting, which is on the 25th, we can do that and make sure that you have that information in between. So that's my proposal. It's definitely the season. You'll start reading how other school systems are proposing. Right now, I think 5% is on the lower end of what I'm seeing other school systems proposing. But it's early yet. So that's just a point in time.
We're still meeting on the 7th, right? So the principals are speaking about over budget, is that right?
We are, we are not meeting on the 7th.
No, we're meeting on the 11th instead of the 7th.
Oh, so the long day's gone?
This is a.
It's a long night. It was voted on in our last meeting. We're not, sorry.
There are too many town folks.
So, I wrote down a list of questions. I'm sure everybody has questions. So, let's say we jump in with questions and then we entertain questions from the audience at the same time and
Absolutely.
and, and go through it. Anyone want to start? I'll start. And I know that this is, this is early on, but I think maybe it's a good time to raise the questions, even though we don't have dollars to go along with each
Sure.
thing yet. But we don't have it in front of us. But going back to your original, can we, can we go back to it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
To the beginning?
It's not.
Uh, keep going to the, oh, yeah, here.
Yep.
Okay, well, it's actually not here yet. But I'll just jump to my question. You said collaboration. We need more of it for the teachers. We've heard that loud and clear in the workshop. I totally agree. I'm wondering, one hour per week, is that a meaningful amount of time to make a difference? It sounds like a really small amount to me.
Right. So I think the, the, the ideas that, that are percolating are one to two hours. But we're wrestling, obviously, with the issues that we are always faced with, which is where do we put that in terms of time that impacts children, which impacts parents? Or on the other end, time that impacts faculty, which would impact salary? Because more time would mean more money.
Well, that was leading to my next question, how that one hour translates to dollars and cents? Because would that be something that we'd have to change the contract for or?
Well, it depends on how we go.
Okay.
So if we don't build it into our schedule, our existing schedule and our existing contract, we would have to pay more. So one hour would be, a very, very rough back-of-the-envelope number is about $300,000 for an entire year. So two hours would be about $600,000.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
So is that district-wide or just local?
That would be district-wide.
I remember Perry talking about it. He asked to invite me to the school.
It's definitely a district issue. It's, you know, the, the issues, I think the, you know, we had a preponderance of high school staff there the other night, but, you know, I think our dis, our staff at the elementary schools would say the same thing. And in fact, they feel it sometimes more because they're in three different towns. And so to consist, you know, to build consistency over three different towns can present challenges.
So they want collaboration every week, so that all three towns meet?
No.
No, the teachers.
Right, the teachers.
Well, it's an American union. That's rough.
Oh, but it might be within a one school. It wouldn't have to be all three towns, if the lower grades, right?
Right.
It's, it's time for the teachers to have together, not related to towns.
Right.
Building specific. I guess what I'm thinking about is, I mean, when they talk about collaboration, it almost sounds like so that they can get their plans to work, like leave them all together. So basically, if science is working on something, maybe English might tie in their lesson with whatever science is working on.
Mm-hmm.
To me, that's lesson planning. And didn't we buy a program for assessment or whatever, or AmesWeb or whatever it does to do that?
So there's, that's a big piece of this, yes. And that's building some capacity. And that's why, you know, we need to look at a couple of different options. But they still need the time together to, to talk about it. It just doesn't happen, you know, all that, it, it, to get it done well, people need to talk about it.
But that's one of those things that I would think would have to come from the top. So basically, if there were a plan of some sort that said, you know, we've already got a framework of some sort as far as each grade. Does it learn these things during these? And so with that framework in mind, wouldn't the teachers, like, they're all kind of on the same page anyways. It's just how they do it, the topic of how they're going to do it. So I'm, I'm not understanding how this one hour is going to, especially trying to get all those people together. I don't understand.
Well, it might not be all the people.
Right.
And it might be that the teachers want to have time together to talk about best classroom management practices. I don't know, whatever it is that they want to deal with. It wouldn't have to be a district-wide thing. It wouldn't have to be how to use AmesWeb. It might be something much more, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not to be about curriculum.
It might be something that, that the teachers feel a need, they want to talk to other teachers about.
So are we getting rid of the full days of professional development?
This would be in addition to, right?
Right. But it's conceivable we could look at phasing out early release.
Okay, so one of the things that we heard about was that the professional development, although it was helpful, it wasn't what they wanted. It wasn't relevant. Or some, there was something, I don't exactly know what it was. It was just whether it wasn't timely or whether it wasn't relevant or whatever. It was interesting. But it, that was the feeling that I got. So now we're back to, okay, we're going to give them collaboration. We're going to give them professional development. But how does it all tie together? This, somebody has to make a decision of how this is all going to flow. I mean, to just jump into it is, we're just going to be wasting time and spinning our wheels.
It would be managed. I mean, we would have schedules.
But it hasn't been.
There's still a professional development committee made up of teachers and administrators. And they're working all the time on trying to figure out what professional development is going to be a priority next and that kind of thing. That's not going to go away.
But the conversation that we had about professional development, I forget when we had that, was that it was not as useful as it could be.
Well, I, I think that was a very, that was primarily from our conversation and feedback from the NIESC report. And you have to keep in mind that the high schools had four years of essentially very directed PD around developing that NIESC report. I mean, that, that's what their time has been around. And on top of that, two of those years have been around state-directed required time around the evaluation tool for one year and one year around DDMs. So the high school, I think, feels, and I think they have a reason to feel this way, that they have not had time to say, this is what we want to work on. This is the curriculum pieces that we need to work on. Because their time has been very directed by these other mandates that they've had to meet.
Okay. So I, I guess what I would want to see is, I would actually want to see a master plan before we start putting money into it.
Yeah, nothing that.
Only because it, I mean, we're, I, I actually feel like we're jumping into a few things a little too early. Like when you say you're going to get rid of AmesWeb after five years, and we've invested a lot of time and money in AmesWeb. And we've got a lot of data out there. And now we're saying it's falling way short of what we need.
Right.
I, I don't want to jump into things. And it's probably a great idea, collaboration, but there's got to be a plan from the top somewhere.
Right. And, and we've been, we've had that plan. And we've been looking at, the, the plan that we're looking at now, we've been evaluating AmesWeb. So it's been five years. It's a reasonable time to evaluate AmesWeb. Our feedback is that it's coming up short in some areas. So our next step is to start looking at what those areas are and where are those areas in other kinds of device, software that's out there.
So you don't think as far as time and resources that we haven't, that it hasn't been a little bit overdone?
What's been overdone?
The time and the resource and the money spent on it.
Well, we've had it for five years and it's.
And five years is a, is a good amount of time?
It's, it's a pretty long time to have a, a particular software that also hasn't had any upgrade. And, and one of the pieces is that we're hearing is that they're not going to upgrade toward the standards, which is concerning to us. So that's another piece of the puzzle.
Does anybody else want to jump in with a question? Or I'll keep going if you want.
I'd just like to see a bit of plan for collaboration and PD.
Yep. The, the PD committee's working on that. And the proposed, the, the idea of, of looking at collaboration time currently isn't a budget item. It's just something that in the, in the next couple of meetings, I would like to bring to you as a, an idea of how we're going to address it.
In the new hires section, you had two new staff members at the high school.
Right.
What departments, what.
So originally, there was, I think, five total folks that he was looking for. Clearly, one area of concern is the alternative education work that they've been looking at.
Isn't that this next person? Or is that?
Right now, that, that's the piece that we're addressing through a paraprofessional, right? And they're, they're not in, at a place where they're ready to say they need a, a full-time person yet. They might be by June. They're working hard. They just don't know. This particular 2.0 would look at trying to meet some of the obligations that they're, they've continued to meet around enrollment growth, which they've had roughly about 45 to 50 kids each year. And some of the electives that they're continuing to try to make sure kids have so that they can winnow down the the studies that kids are placed in.
Okay, so they'd be teachers and teachers of elective subjects. Is that what?
Uh, I think it'll be a mix of, of core and electives.
What were the other FTE requests for?
Um, there was a, a request for a 1.0 guidance. There were, there were some FTE totals to give release time to team, to department chairs. Well, some, right now, our department chairs do not evaluate. As part of their, their job description, they do not evaluate. And the idea is that we would like them to.
Who's, who's evaluating if they're not?
The administrators.
Administrators, huh?
So that, that's a more lengthy process and it might take us another year to get there, to get that done through negotiations. So I just said, you know, we're not there yet. So let's not put it in the budget.
So this is the new evaluation project by the state?
Right.
So it was evaluate, all right, so it's time for the chairs to evaluate?
Time for the chairs, uh, so team, for the department chair.
Yeah.
A 1.0 guidance and then specific increases in the core and FTEs for the electives.
So I think we have to address the guidance request because that's come up a few years in a row, hasn't it? I remember sitting in.
A few years ago, it was, we added a guidance.
So, so we have, how many guidance counselors?
We, we currently have six guidance counselors. One who has more responsibility around career guidance. And then as part of that six is the director. And so some of her time is not student-directed.
Oh, okay. But she probably doesn't have a full complement of students if she's the director. She probably. But she probably doesn't have a full complement of students, if she's the director, she probably doesn't have a full complement.
She does not have a full complement.
So, so we have five guidance couns-, 'cause frankly, I haven't had two children go through this school, I think the guidance department is woefully understaffed. Personal experience as a parent?
It's just 217 for guidance counselors.
It's, but it's not, because the guidance director doesn't have a full complement.
217.
Pardon?
Each guidance counselor has 217 kids.
She's only divided by five.
But that's not really how it works, 'cause it's not how, yeah.
Because one's dedicated to freshmen and one's dedicated to, uh, career-related things.
They, they don't, they're not doing the direct, dedicated to freshman piece.
Oh, no, okay.
But I, but I wanna understand more about that, bec-, and, and only because guidance to me was one thing, and it, and having gone through the experience and having friends who have kids with special needs, and I don't mean sped, I mean, special needs.
Sure, sure.
Um, all kinds of special needs, it just seems like, I don't know how they can do what they do, and they're doing it, I mean, even the, the college support that we have gotten, I think they're doing what they can, but I would like to see them do more.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd really like to know if guidance is handling college placements and preparing students for that, plus the regular stuff that guidance counselors that we know traditionally do, and then, I mean, just feels like now they've got kind of an influx of, you know, at need, at risk kids, so they're handling that, um, the, the incidence of ADHD, or whatever the other issues are, kind of is ballooning.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wonder why we're not looking at, what is it that guidance is doing, and do they need more? And if they keep asking for it, why aren't we giving it to them?
Right, and I, I think those are good questions, I don't wanna speak on a turn, I think those are questions that Perry can talk to and address. I think there are the, uh, when we had the conversation of, about having to get to, you know, what's the direction the budget's gonna go in, because you have to make decisions. Um, there, there's still some work that, that can and should be done around defining roles and, um, around the career guidance piece, um, and also, we've, we've added a social worker last year, um, and what piece that role can take on, uh, to be a better, you know, to give some assistance to, um, essentially the core of academic counseling. Um, so there's still some work that I think that organi-, piece of the organization has to, to address, and Perry can talk to that.
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna come back to it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, when Perry comes to talk, he could actually give us a breakdown of what the guidance council is made up of, because what you're saying-
He what up, I'm sorry.
What it's made up of, I mean, I mean, you've got the core that are called guidance councils, but you're also seeing the social workers take on some of that work, and then you've got the college placement taking on some of that work, to some extent.
Uh, the-
Well, that is the guidance council.
That is the guidance council, yeah.
Yeah, there is a separate, yeah.
So there's no, okay, so, I mean, I'd like to see how that functions, how, all the people, how they function, because you might be right.
Also, I, I think also that what percentage of our kids use the guidance outside of college career planning?
Right.
I, I mean, I, I think, not-
So you support the need?
Well, I'm just thinking that, I would say, it's to- pure speculation.
Well, there are, I mean, all the, all the course schedules and-
The juniors and seniors use it for the college planning, that is a high need.
Right.
But out of those kids at the same time, who are also needing it for whatever need, you know, whatever need, other needs they have, I'm sure it's not all the juniors and seniors, you know, I'm sure it's not the whole class.
Right, oh, definitely, right.
So, not that I'm saying one need is greater, but by volume, you know, which one, how many kids actually are going,
Takes up function.
and, and, you know, I'm sure those kids that aren't going, they need to, but, um-
So, are we addressing a medium need?
Hmm?
Because, you know, but we don't know what it's made up of, it isn't just five people. Actually, the secretary's really good.
And students are-
Yeah, she's like the one I actually, I don't know.
Other guidance base, I'm sure.
She's, she knows her, no, it's a little, she's good.
Um, on the, the same thing, the new staff?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's a page or two away, I'm not sure, but at Hale?
Yep.
Got the burgeoning sixth grade class?
Yep.
Why isn't there an extra teacher in fifth grade that we can move to sixth grade?
So, they just happen to have, um, a cou- a couple of different class shifts that are coming up, and so it's being absorbed. We are reducing, wouldn't be introducing, um, yeah, so we don't show the, the reductions, so we still have, um, we do have reductions of staff in there, but there are shifts going on in center because of changing enrollments.
Okay, I can say one thing, the, the, the current third grade in center is also really big, so I bet that's kind of what's on.
It's big, right. Yeah.
Okay.
But there is a reduction.
Okay, so if there is a reduction, then that's a little deceiving, 'cause it's not adding one, it's moving one.
No, no, as Michael said, those are all the adds, there are several reductions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's no other, uh, classes in other towns that are similar in size?
Similar size, that's 113?
This one, yeah.
No.
Still is, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're experiencing some diff- differing, um, enrollment fluxes at each of, in Bolton and Lancaster, where they're seeing a slight decline.
So at some point in the next day, or maybe it's February 11th, we'll see those reductions.
Yeah. You'll see it, there's a page that says, uh, staff changes, so it shows the pluses and the minuses.
Okay. Okay, that will be helpful, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was a tech person being added?
Yes.
Uh, what building is that for?
So this is a district position, um, so this person will, uh, we, we operate on a, um, point-of-service, uh, model. So, there's a ticket system, and the ITS, uh, in each building, look at the tickets for the day, they prioritize what they're going to address, and then they, uh, send up, uh, to, um, the tech department, um, and then they prioritize that list, and then they get dispersed and assigned throughout the district.
So that new person could be going to any building?
Right.
Okay, including the high school?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, and then on the, um, the one-to-one in the technology app you were talking about, um, we didn't talk about in this conversation, but it seems to be that if, um, we're gonna be switching to Park, which we might.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna have to have more computers, right?
Right.
So, um, I just wanted us to include Park in that conversation.
Sure, so, uh, yes, so that's a big part of why we're making that leap now. Uh, we need to, we're required, uh, in order to meet the technology obligation, uh, for whether it's Park, or whatever the next, uh, replacement for MCAS is going to be, it will be a technology-driven tool, and, and I can predict ninety percent accuracy that it will be. Uh, we need to have X number of machines available in that grade, uh, that we're assessing. Uh, and so essentially, what this will do is for our middle schools, and then when, when it goes into the high school, we will have the right number of, of, um, devices for that grade, because it will be there.
So we've already decided that we're going to Park?
No, we're, we're ramping up to prepare for whatever the state decides.
Yeah, but- And whatever the state decides is gonna require all this technology?
Uh, again, with ninety percent accuracy, um, I'm sure that it's gonna be a technology-driven assessment.
We don't know for sure, but probably.
So because the state is requiring that this happened, they're not gonna provide any grants or anything to this?
It's highly unlikely.
So is anybody at, uh, MSBA?
On funding mandates?
Well, well, again, it doesn't make any sense, I mean, how can you put a, a burden on a, a district or anybody without backing it up? Has anybody talked to the state at all about it? Is there any, like, MASC, are they talking to them at all about it?
I, I, yes, I mean, there, there's been a lot of conversation about the, the whole rollout of a, a replacement for, for MCAS, and I think there's a lot of concern that, um, it's too soon, uh, they're gonna make a decision in, in September, and in all likelihood, it's gonna roll in March. Uh, with the communities that are piloting this year, we're not one of those communities, we chose not to, um, they're going to have, um, you know, they're going through those exercises now, and they're trying to figure out what the issues are. Um, but in, in all likelihood, they're gonna make a decision in September, and, and we need to be ready at least in March with, for something.
So do you qualify for E-rate grants?
Uh, we do qualify for E-rate, uh, but there's nothing in E-rate that is above and beyond, uh, to pay for anything that we would need to buy new equipment with.
It's technology.
Right, that they don't pay for, E-rate does not pay for, um, t- t- devices.
Looking more for the, the people structured.
The backup, and the services.
There's just an article in the Globe today about the Park transition, fifty-four percent of the state is doing it.
Right.
And, um, some of them are suffering greatly, trying to make the transition, so really kinda, really, we're not one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any grants out there that we could go after?
They're, it's very hard to sign grants that will buy devices, they'll, they'll pay for PD maybe, they'll pay for, uh, professional development, um, they might pay for some kind of, um, you know, advanced teen kind of training type of things, but the, devices aren't, because they, they consider that to be, um, operational, you know, you have to do it, and grants usually aren't for that.
Although, I know companies like Raytheon and others, sorry, Raytheon, have a very impressive community program for STEM, which would include the purchase of that type of equipment, if it applied to a specific type of STEM-related program. So I think that there, there are some opportunities, I don't, I don't know what they are, but just having spent six months there on a project, I saw them. They have a lot, and they have, they're generous with their communities, so we would just have to, somebody would have to start to pit, you know, target, like you say, the Bose and the Raybonds and the other organizations that have sustainability programs, which is what those are, and look into them.
Bose is very difficult to get resources for.
Well, but you know where I'm going with that. Um, I have a question on BYOD.
Good song.
Everybody sing.
Um, it's, 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 is that just a nod to BYOD, or is there a funding that supports BYOD?
Well, we don't really need to have any funding, um, to, for BYOD, um, the, uh, you know, it pretty much stands on its own.
Is it effective?
Is it effective? Not, not by the measure that we want, which is that more people are bringing in devices, so I would say no.
I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that, because at the roundtable, um, what I heard was that most of the kids are using their phones, and it's not really, that, it's kinda like, yeah, it's there, it's kind of a check the box, we have it, but doesn't really do anything. However, I did talk to someone, a couple of other folks who were like, well, but some of the teachers are using it efficiently, and they're doing really a, a great job with it. So the question is, rather than just have this BYOD policy out there that's just hanging there doing nothing, other than saying we have it, is there a way to look?
But it's so well-written.
Pardon? What was it?
I said, but it's really well-written, the policy, I'm just kidding.
Oh, um, is there a way to look at who's using it well?
Yes.
And formalizing the program to see where it could be plugged in, because not everyone's gonna be able to utilize it.
So, that's part of that PV piece, uh, because we essentially need to train teachers how to use technology when the majority, or, or hopefully all the kids, have it, and they have a, they have a lesson that requires it, and that's the piece that the, the folks who have really made good use of BYOD have already bought into, and have had some prior training, um, but again-
Who does the training for that particular?
Um, well, we've done a couple of different ways, we've had some people go off-site and go to visit other schools. We have folks, uh, our digiting, digital learning coordinator's done some of that training, uh, but it's optional, and, and so now we would require it, because that would be the direction.
Yeah, because I would love to see the teachers that are using it efficiently lead the training, right.
Well, and also, that goes into the piece of an hour collaboration, when the teacher is using it,
Right, when do they do that?
Go talk with another teacher and show them how we can use this.
Right, but I'd just love to see, if we're gonna have BYOD make it do something for us, and, like, don't put it on the screen unless, so it's, I'm glad to hear that you're gonna try to formalize that.
Yeah, it's, that PD piece is really a critical part, it really is.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm, I'm really concerned that, you know, if you're gonna go that way, I'm still not convinced that we have the network, whether the network is even configured correctly to support any of this.
Again, we can, maybe not during this budget presentation, but a separate one, we can go through the whole network for you, Lynn, if it really feels-
And it's hard, but it-
But I don't think it's just Lynn, kinda.
No, I know, I know, I, I understand.
And I still want, I still, still believe we need to bring someone in to look at it objectively.
Yeah, well, we'll have the consultants who have, uh, mapped out the access points come in and talk.
Right, and there's investment in this budget for more access points, and hopefully more bandwidth, so we're out of this bill.
But, but are the people that are coming in to talk to us not gonna just say, you only have X number of access points we think we wanna hear and hear? Are they gonna holistically look at our technology?
What do you mean, holistically?
We don't know the health of the network.
That became a little too good once, what do you mean, holistically?
Well, actually, that's a good point, the health of the network.
I, I missed, I, yeah, what, what was the question, I still hear.
Well, there has to be more when you're, when you're assessing a technology function than just where your access points are and the bandwidth. I'm not a technology person, but I would like to see, this is the state of where we are, this is what we need, this is what we have, this is where we need to be in five years, and this is how we should prepare to get ourselves there. And I, having heard at the roundtables that technology is not where people believe it should be, either it's not where it should be, or there's a disconnect in how it's being used and how it's being serviced. So, it could be that we have everything that we need, but that people don't know how to use it, or that people are experiencing frustration for some other reason, which just says there's a big disconnect somewhere between what we have, what we think we have, and what is in fact being utilized and functional.
Well, one of the challenges you always have when you're building a big system, is that, especially when it comes to technology, is everybody has a preference, okay, like even as administrators, there's six or seven principles. If you ask Mr. Bates and I, we would probably have different preferences as the exact device to be one of use, okay? But we both ultimately end up using the device that the district agrees upon, that works all the way through the district. So, what I heard, I think we're at the same table, or we're the other, I remember, and, you know, I know there's frustration here and there, people would rather have different things, okay, but that, that's always gonna happen. But I think overall, people will tell you that they feel very, uh, fortunate by the amount of money and resources we put into technology. And if you go to, you know, and maybe the high school's a little different, as we've heard mainly from high school teachers there, but I think if you go to most of the schools, the teachers are pretty happy with the amount of technology, the amount of tech-
But they're not the experts, they're not the experts telling us this is where you need to go, and this is where you should be. And frankly, if we have legacy systems, which we have, which means they're bolt-on solutions, that's not necessarily, and I know that much, that that's not an efficient use of, I mean, you're trying to handle, working with a legacy system, and then you bolt something on because you need some more functionality, you have to fix something here, so you've got all this kinda like piecemeal work. I'm still, I'm, I'm le-, I, 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 I don't know why there's pushback on bringing someone in from a, an objective perspective. Technology's not gonna go away, just like the argument we had last year about healthcare is not gonna go away, so why don't we look at those big, huge ticket items, and technology's an enabler as well? Let's look at it, see what do we have, have someone come in and give us a perspective. I'm sure there are people out there that work with districts.
There are, and we bring those people in, that's the thing, it's not like we don't do it. So we can keep bringing people in, and we always will be keeping people bringing in.
Well, then why don't we know what they're saying? Why haven't we seen a report? Why hasn't anyone come to us and said, this is where you're at in Neshoba, this is where we think you're gonna be based on your, you know, what your goals and your curriculum are, what your growth is, what your issues are, and what your legacy systems look like now?
Well, I mean, you bring people in, I was consulting, whether we do a, whether we do exactly what you just stated all the time, I, I necessarily mean to state that, I, we had to have a scope of what we were trying to do, because we have a substantial investment as to where we are, and I think where we are is pretty well-developed. Is it perfect? No, but I think it's pretty well-developed. So there has to be an understanding, if we change dramatically in midstream, that would be very expensive to do.
But I'm looking at an assessment, not a change, I wanna know what the assessment is.
Right, right. And, you know, I think we have to have a scope of how we would do that, I think, I think we're open to that, we'd be open to that.
Couldn't the person that coordinates that whole department provide that information without that?
We went through that before, and I don't agree with that, I don't, I'm, I'm not all about the homegrown, and, and frankly, where technology's concerned, I don't know this person, people, whoever they are, and I'm so sorry, I hope this doesn't offend anyone, but I'm not comfortable looking inside someone who's been insulated in an organization for a number of years without having perspective on what's going on outside.
I, I think that's unfair, okay, because I think they have a-
But is it true, or is it not?
No, I, I think it's not true, that's why I think it's unfair, okay? I think we have a pretty well-built, well-thought-out, good philosophy of the system.
Great, have him come in and tell us what it is.
Absolutely, I think that, we can do that, because I think-
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, I think that's, but I, I think that's, I think that's a very-
Well, but that doesn't mean that's the solution, that means he's gonna come in and talk to us.
It doesn't mean it's a solution, but I do think it is well-thought-out with good philosophies behind it, and I think, one thing, I think- And I think, one thing I think we do well, I think he's done very well, is we're not a knee-cutting edge. We don't jump off every time something else comes out. And if we do, sometimes we end up in a lot of things. You know, we might own a hundred beta recorders to go back twenty years, that type of thing if we did that, okay? So we don't, I think we're pretty cutting edge, but we don't jump off at the newest thing every time.
George, that's oversimplification.
No, it's not.
Yeah, because you know that I'm not suggesting that.
I know, I'm not saying you're suggesting that at all, I'm not talking about what you're suggesting. I'm talking about why I think his, you know, his philosophy and his view of how he's put together the system with an awful lot of collaboration. Most of it is based on input from our teaching and learning people and people who look at, you know, what we need for kids and things like that. And then he figures out the technical solutions, what the learning needs are. He doesn't figure out what the learning needs are. Those learning needs are figured out and decided through a collaboration of staff, our technology plan, our digital learning coordinator, people like that. And then it's discussed and they figure it out in the best way to implement it, you know, in an efficient and, you know, is a, I don't wanna say, is a cost-effective, efficient manner that we can afford. But we spend a lot of money on it nonetheless, so it's not like we're, it's not like we're doing it cheap in any way. But it's a huge infrastructure.
It's a huge infrastructure, exactly.
So I, and I think it's, I, you know, I'm not an expert. As you say, you're not an expert, so you're also an expert. But I think overall, I think it works pretty well. And I think that's because it's been built thoughtfully over a period of years.
But what you're saying and what other people who are using it are saying are not the same thing.
But I don't hear that though.
Well, that's a problem! If I were you, I would be concerned about that, that you're not hearing about it, but we are.
I think that's unfair too, because I hear from a lot of different people. I mean, I put Joel on the spot too, but I don't think he hears it either.
Well, I wouldn't want Joel to say that. I wouldn't want Joel to say, I don't know what people's concerns are.
Well, I didn't say I didn't know what people's concerns were. I said, I don't think that people have said, people always have concerns, okay?
Okay, here's the bottom line, we don't have to go on anymore, but bottom line is, I am not confident based on all of the concerns that people have in different parts of the district that we have a technology program that is sufficient to get us to the next level.
Okay, but I think we should try and agree, we don't have to go on now, okay? But I think we should try.
That's what I just said.
But, no, no, I said, I agree.
Good.
But I think we should delineate and list what some of those concerns are. Because it's easy to say, I don't think we have this, whatever.
That's not for me to say. We need someone to come in and talk to us about it. If you want this fellow, whoever he is, to come in and talk to us, that's great. But I think you need to make sure you know what the concerns are from people who are utilizing it. And if you're not hearing about it, you need to ask.
I've heard the concerns.
Oh, now you've heard the concerns.
I've heard the concerns, like the ones we heard at the table we were at a couple of weeks ago. I certainly have heard those things from time to time, there's discussions happen within, you know, people want certain things, we're not even providing, things like that, okay? What I said was, I didn't say I didn't hear the concerns. What I said was, I do not believe that's a predominant feeling of the majority of the people who use the technology. That's what I said.
Okay, I think we need to find out what's going on. But if there are people who are consistently concerned about it or people who are consistently say, I can't get on it, I get booted off of it, I can't use it in my classroom, then there's a problem. And if you wanna bring in this person who, this is their particular role, bring him in, but he's gotta be able to answer those questions. And I don't necessarily have the questions to ask, to be intelligent enough to ask them.
Well, and I wasn't implying, Lorraine, that we don't wanna bring in somebody else because they might tell us that, something we don't wanna hear. The reason I was suggesting that we bring in our own expert is because we're already paying him and we wouldn't have to put out all this money to have a study done by a consultant that we might have the expertise right in-house and we're already paying him. That was my point, not, I'm not afraid of what he might say or what an outsider might say. I'm afraid of what it might cost us, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Actually, it costs us more if we don't pay. Especially with BYOD.
Maybe that's true, I don't have evidence of that being true, but, um, so I just wanted to weigh in, that was my point, not, had nothing to do with the personalities involved or the people that I didn't want to have come in or what I didn't wanna hear. It was about the money, that was my point.
I think it's short money, especially for an enabler to learn.
All right, I had one more question. And that was, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out how Rubicon Atlas and Baseline Edge fell under the title of collaboration.
So, they're all real-time collaboration software, so I think we talked a little bit, referenced it a little bit earlier. So Rubicon Atlas is the kind of software where in real time, multiple people can be writing a unit of study in different places. So that's, that's why that's a collaboration. Baseline Edge is a collaboration because it's a district depository of all of the data from our assessment systems that we use. And what it can do in, by grade, by class, by grade, by school, by district, teachers can look at data to better understand where they might have to dive deep for instruction and then ask those teachers who are having success with the results and talk about what they're doing in those units of study to improve their practice.
Okay, thank you.
So all that information is public to teachers?
There are certain levels of public for confidentiality purposes, but generic summaries are available to teachers. So by grade, for example, they can see their class, they can see the grade of data, they can't see a teacher's class, another teacher's class.
So if I were a teacher and I had an idea and I said, wow, your kids are doing much better in MCAS than mine, what are you doing differently? Do I call on the phone?
You could.
And collaborate that way?
You could, or you could.
So am I paying her that?
No.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, I just, I wanna know how this all works. And is there a, in the Rubicon Atlas, is there a plan? You know, the kid, a direction for the teachers or are they just kinda doing their thing?
Nope, there's a plan. So this year was the implementation year.
Of Altrubicon?
Of Altrubicon.
And so they are, they had required learnings around developing, using the software, developing the units of study. And then, so they have to do a unit of study as practice and it would be peer reviewed and then they are going to have access to, and they have to do their calendar of units and then they are going to then develop X number of units each year.
Is this the one that's our number one goal for our five-year plan?
Yes.
That's gonna be done in five years?
Yeah.
Anyone else, questions, there must be?
Let's see, a lot of the questions are already asked. An additional, uh, Maureen, go first then. The additional team chair for special ed, how many do we have now? Just get a sense of.
So we have four team chairs that are school psychologists and one team chair who is not a school psychologist, but expertise in special education. And so this other team chair would be another school psychologist.
Will this question help in the assessment? Okay, so basically we're going from five to six.
Right.
Very smart for the sense of, um, and let's, we talked about technology, repair staff. So is this, what kind of skills or qualifications are we talking about? Like hardware stuff, software, combination?
It's mostly hardware.
Mostly hardware. And are we talking more on like fixing computers or like network kind of things or both?
I would say both.
End user.
End user.
Pretty much end user.
Yeah.
End user thing, so like.
My computer doesn't boot up or I can't, or my computer's checking or that type of thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't hit my projector, you know, projector is not working.
Yep. I think, I think people have touched on this. It seems like PD for teachers for the technology, there's, in addition to how to use it and how to teach differently with it, isn't there also a piece on how to sort of manage it in the classroom? So the kids are using it when it's appropriate and how to manage not using it when it shouldn't be used?
Yep.
Um, let's see, what else do we? I'm looking, cause a lot of things I wrote are people already.
While she's looking, can I just go back to the spec team chair?
Sure.
Um, this is just specifically for kids who qualify for, for services.
Who are referred for services, so she would take them, she or he would take them back to the process.
Right. Um, I think everybody, other people already, pretty much. I, I, going back to the assessing the network or whatever at the high school and whether that's working or not.
The whole district.
The whole, okay, but.
Cause everything goes back to the high school.
But anyways, my question is, people have said there are many concerns and many complaints and I think we really need to, the ones that we know that people have, I think we need to have a clear list of, you know, can't connect or drops the connection and reconnects. Because, because if people are having a lot of problems with connecting to the wifi and then the wifi connection gets dropped and stuff, that looks like it's slow because it's spending so much time just re-establishing its connection. So I think we need, those kinds of things, we need more than just a general, a lot of people have a lot of concerns. I would like to have a list so that when we bring someone in, we make sure that they look at all the things that could be impacting the things that people have concerns about.
Mm-hmm.
Or whether we bring someone in.
We could actually build some of those questions into the survey, since it's going to the staff anyway.
Yeah.
So I'm not even sure, so, Maureen, I would, you know, if you have a couple of minutes later on, maybe we can talk about what you think some of those questions would look like.
Or even just a jumping off point, do we have the list that came out of that meeting? Do we, do we have the list of notes?
Yep.
From the teachers?
So we have a clear sense of what the shortcomings are.
Right, well, from an end user perspective, that handles the end user, that doesn't handle the back, you know, the backend systems, legacy systems.
Right, but like if a lot of people are complaining about it being slow, is that because we don't have the bandwidth and there's too much streaming?
Right.
Or, and, and how people are using it, you know, looking at Wikipedia versus streaming YouTube videos.
Right, yeah, good point, yeah, she's right.
So that is psychologists, just to finish that off. These are, they were given for the psychologists. Do the psychologists work at all about getting kids off of it? Once they're on it, I mean, do they reassess these kids at all?
Oh, yeah, every three years.
Every three years?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering if they're working on, I mean, whatever they're, I mean, I would like to look at, okay, so we recognize that there's an issue, you have been working on it. Okay, are you any closer to getting off? Are we giving you skills to get off? Or are we just kinda holding it up and, and hold off?
Well, they have annual things and they have, every three years, they have to have a big team meeting where they get a little.
And they have team meetings way more than every three years, they have team meetings all the time.
And those psychologists taking care of that, that's their job.
They are part, party for those, yeah.
And then as far as the, to, to us, you know, these phone calls, are you getting an extra guy to come in because they're handling phone calls from POS coming in and then they distribute it at the end of the day? If they just common problems that they're going to all the time, do we have like a frequently asked tech problem that they can refer to before they call the techs?
Yes, so, and, and the ITS person in the building is there for sort of that next layer after that. The, when it gets routed up to a tech repair, something actually has to be fixed. So there has to be a person on staff to do it.
Do you have bad sectors on your hard drive or do you need a new hard drive? Dave, you waited patiently.
Uh, the budget is up, house budget is up a little over five percent. Most of us in the room know that assessment increases and budget increases can be different. Can you give any indication of what the assessment increases are likely to be?
Well, it's very premature, I mean, the estimates.
Well, it's very premature for two reasons. One, because of the fact that we don't have House One yet, so therefore we don't have the Chapter Seventy number nor do we have the minimum local contributions. So therefore, it's really not that meaningful at this time. I can say this, it looks like that overall, the, our offsets will be down slightly this year. So that makes the net budget a little bit higher than five point oh seven percent. So I think the assessments will probably, once you see, will be in the, probably in the six percent range.
I would note that if a town's revenues are up three percent, which with Prop two and a half and then some new growth is a wildly off number, a five percent increase in the assessment uses up all of the new money, actually a little more than all of the new money, and leaves a slight negative amount for the rest of the town. And at six percent, that problem just gets that much worse.
Yeah.
The other thing, the school choice, I think you said was, well, the numbers worked out to down sixty-two students from the peak from two thirty to one sixty-eight, which I think is sixty-two. So that's like three hundred and ten thousand dollars of lower revenues from the peak, is that about right?
Hmm, I think so. It's a little more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that would be right there, but there's also some other costs involved, so it's a little more.
So it's worse than three hundred and ten thousand?
Yes, a little worse.
That's, that's a significant number, right? I mean, you're worried about four hundred thousand overrun on special ed, so about three hundred thousand plus shortfall on, on the chain or the out of district is significant, right, too. On that, at the tri-town meeting, and I can't remember how late you were able to stay, Michael, I think I came across as a great proponent of stripping out the chain students on the space needs thing. And I want a really thorough analysis of the chain students on the space needs situation.
The choice student, Dave.
Hmm?
The choice student?
School choice.
School choice, sorry, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
But it's possible that if the hundred thousand are paying half a million a year and we've got, I don't know, five million a year of debt service on the new space, it might be a favorable trade-off, I don't know. The trade-off might be less space and lower debt payments, but will the debt payments because of the slight space savings offset the five hundred thousand in school choice? So I just wanna say that I think we should look very strongly at school choice and the space needs, but we should look at it in both the positive and the negative sense. How much more space does it make us have? How much more revenues do we get if we keep?
Right. So we have to have that philosophical discussion about school choice anyway, right? Sorry?
Soon.
I would like to have that philosophical.
I don't wanna move it too much away from the budget to space needs, I know, but I just, I just wanted to bring that up, that school choice works both ways.
Definitely does.
It absolutely does, it's a very good point.
When does school choice open up for Lorraine?
Uh, we would have to have a decision by May first if we.
Does that go to the means for Lorraine?
Uh, well, just to make a, if we were going to change our current practice, we would have to have that decision by May first.
For this September.
This, right, next September.
So when do we have that, start having those discussions?
Uh, we've typically done them in March.
Typically done them in March, yeah. It doesn't seem we have to do it that way, but that's what we usually do.
But if we do it in March, then it's already assumed it's in the, but the whatever assumptions we have for this year would be in the budget for next year. Is that right?
That is true, although, I'm trying to think, it's, I mean, let's just say we were talking specifically about high school, because we've already taken care of K through eight.
Right.
Um, it's highly unlikely I would see any of our high school students vacate their spot if they already had it.
I'm not talking about them vacating, I'm talking about.
But that would be the impact, in other words, we already have them.
So the change in one year wouldn't be that great.
Either way.
Cause they're, you know, we have the eighth graders who are gonna go into ninth grade. So we'll have a few less there. But the ones that are there are predominantly there, so we might end up with, you know, ninety as opposed to a hundred. So it's not gonna be a huge dent in the financial impact, is what I'm suggesting.
I, I, I think we're on the same page, but the way I'm looking at it is if, if it's shut down between K and eight, K and eight now.
Yeah.
And we have a hundred spots available at the high school, the policy currently says that if we only have ninety kids, we can fill those other ten spots at the high school.
Correct.
And what I would like to see is shut it down for backfilling those spots at the high school.
And we are saying the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but we just have to grandfather in all the kids that are on the.
Well, that's, that's a given and. Well, that's, that's a given, and then, I don't even think about kids who are school choice is school choice. I, I, when I think school choice, I think moving forward.
Yep.
So, and so when do those discussions happen? Because I want to be here for that.
Again, we typically have had them in March, because they're not, they really haven't been, um, an immediate budget concern, they're usually a budget concern the following year.
Yeah, but I always thought that we had them earlier, because the lottery usually happens in February or March.
No, lottery's always late in April.
No, it's usually like April.
No.
Yeah, I'm sure, I thought it was March.
Kindergarten lottery's early.
Kindergarten lottery's earlier.
So we want to wait until this budget has been voted on and approved in order...
Well, a couple things, though, this isn't a dollar-for-dollar thing, it's something we should probably talk about at some point, not necessarily today, but up until last year, we used 1.3 million dollars a year. This budget is built on recommended using 1.1 million dollars a year this year. We're not bringing in 1.1 million dollars in school choice, but we do have our school choice reserve, which we had built up the earlier years, we've been using it all in the last couple years. So, we're probably, so this budget alone, just in order to keep some, you know, easy tapering off, since it's clearly our school choice right now, we're using money from our school choice reserve, so to speak. So we're using all our current income, plus about two or three, I had to look up, two or three hundred thousand dollars from our school choice reserve. So, I guess what I'm saying is, e- even if you ultimately make the decision you just described a few minutes ago, it wouldn't have a real impact on this particular year, but...
Which, which, I know, but you know what? I get that, and, and that's the beauty of school choice, is it tapers off, you're not left with a, a big cliff of money disappearing off budget, but...
It's going to taper off here, then.
Right, it's going to taper off, which is nice, which is great. So if you shut it down in the high school now, for any new choice students coming in, are you going to feel it that strongly? Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, no, but I mean, in fairness, you're, you're feeling it, and that's, I, it's fine, but you're feeling it this year to the, to the two, two hundred thousand dollars.
So I remember when school choice was first introduced, and I wasn't on the school committee, and when it, when it was introduced and I was sitting in the audience, I remember saying, is this the only way that, that the district generates revenue? And I was compli... it was, I mean, the response was so strong, that's, we don't generate revenue, okay. But I remember specifically, the reason school choice was brought in and was voted on and approved, was because we needed, for one or two years, we needed to, to soften the blow of the fact that we weren't going to have the money that we needed, and it was a case-by-case, year-by-year decision, but this isn't something that we're going to do for the long term, so we can vote on it year by year, but all of a sudden, over the past few years, it's become part of our regular budget, it's become relied upon. So like in my world, it's above the fold, above the line, and below the line, and this has become an above-the-line item, when it, it really should not have become something that we rely on annually.
And, uh, I can just respond to that. I, I would agree with most of what you said, but the big part that I do agree with, um, is when this was going in, uh, was just before the financial crisis of two thousand and eight, and, and we did have high hopes that this was going to be money above the fold, if you will, that would have allowed us to do some of the innovation that we talked about earlier.
Right.
But what ended up happening is two thousand and eight, and, you know, we immediately lost something like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that first year, and essentially never got that back. So, that...
I'm not disputing what, I'm, and the reason for...
No, I'm just saying that, so, yep, I think that's what happened, and...
And it, from a fiscal perspective, it makes such good sense.
Right, right, we protect our community.
From a social perspective, it doesn't, especially if you live in Bolton. However, what I'm saying is because, because we're not in two thousand and eight, because the economy's turned around, because things are better, we don't need it right now.
Well, I, I think we, that's a piece of information we don't have yet, I, I mean, if, if we were to base some of our conversation about need on, on what Mr. Lindsay just talked about, um, I think the communities would have a different perspective.
They might, but if they had kids in the school, maybe not. I, I would re... it just feels like it's artificial to me. It's an artificial number, we're not living within our means. You get paid a paycheck every month or every week, and the money goes into your account, and you know that it's going to be there, and this is kind of like your grandmother gave you a few hundred thousand dollars, but we can't plan on grandma giving us a few hundred thousand dollars every year, and we should, nor should we, because it's not a fixed income that we're getting, so I think we should live within our means.
Well, it was for a while, now we're living on grandma's money, because what we're doing is we're taking the reserve and we'll use that to bring it down over, over a period of years, seriously.
Which, which is, which is great, so, but if you have that money sitting in account, just sitting there?
Yeah, I've never heard of that.
That makes me think that...
It's on the report every year, and then we...
It is on the report, but like, we, we don't have to do any more, I don't, I don't mean to derail this, but I just want to have...
We never spend the school choice money in the year we get it anyways, we generally try to spend it the following year, that's been our overall philosophy. We're spending a lot more in the present year right now, that's how we started out, we originally had...
And that's how it was sp... but wasn't originally that, wasn't that the, the theory behind it?
Yeah, but then, but then the things that Michael talked about, and stuff like that, and we got into it, and, you know, and those, and those you used, so we're using the advantage, we didn't originally, when we first did it, we didn't, we only spent it against what we spent out. Remember, we used to be the other way, so we used to take whatever revenue we got and to pay our outgoing bill, okay? And then, over the last five, what are the numbers, five or six or seven years, we started having more incoming than outgoing. The first couple of years we did that, we didn't spend that money at all, so that money kind of just sat there, so that's where the reserve came from.
I don't, I don't want the towns to know that. We have, we have, we have a ton of money and who sat on it?
It's not a ton of money, but, you know, it's a reserve account that we, you know, we've talked about, all our reserve accounts hopefully have a year's worth of, uh, our desires, but have our, a year's worth of expenditures in our reserve accounts.
So we need to have a conversation at some point.
Just have a question, sir?
Yes, I agree.
Um, sure, I have several questions. One is just a point of information about the slide, um, where it says only eighty-one going out, what do you actually mean by that?
Uh, only eighty-one school choice students are going out.
And what parts of the population are disappearing this coming year?
Uh, it's, it's pretty much over the pre-K through twelve spectrum. I, I would have to look at it more closely to see if there's a bu... a bubble in any particular year. Oftentimes, uh, generally, uh, of the population that are currently, they're going out before they even come in the district. That is, they've never attended us, uh, our district schools, uh, and they are, so there might be reasons of, um, job location of the parent, um...
Does that disappear?
They just disappear.
For benign reasons.
For benign reasons.
So should I understand, a hundred and sixty-eight next year, if people don't arrive in, say, at the high school level, the number will be eighty-one if no action is taken? Is that the right way to understand that?
No, I think, I think we're losing, um, I think the number is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty of actual students that were...
All right, I'm, I'm just misunderstanding again, so eighty-one going out means what?
Eighty-one students that are charged to our district for school choice.
I see, so the outgoing money.
That's right, the outgoing money.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Right.
Um, so I do have several other questions, but I don't want to prevent school committee members from having their questions if they're still on the plate.
Anybody object to having him go on? No? Fine with me.
Um, I was curious to understand a little bit more about, you, you mentioned in passing prepaid accounts, prepaid, uh, events, and I, I take a, a guess that you might be meaning, for example, we get paid, or you treat now money for transportation as money available next year, in the next fiscal year, are there other occasions like that?
Transportation is different, we generally, unfortunately, it's difficult because we never know what it is, we spend that in the current fiscal year. So even though a law was just passed this year, that would allow us to reserve transportation money to be spent in the next fiscal year, but that has not been allowed previous to this year. Our circuit breaker reimbursement is, is money that we get this year that we use as a revenue next year, so in other words, if you, when you see the detail of the budget, anything in the circuit breaker reimbursement, that's money that will be paid to us and in the bank by June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and we'll spend that FY two thousand and sixteen. Other things, like we have revolving accounts for our preschool, our extended day, which is shown as either revenues are offset. Generally, what our goal and philosophy has been since I've been here, is part of the recovery from the financial crisis of a number of years ago, is that those accounts reflect a year's worth of expenditures. So even though they're revolving accounts and not, uh, allotment accounts from the state, our, our approach and philosophy here has been that we'll have a full year's balance in there before this is spent. We're not always successful, our kindergarten revolving account is not at that level, it's only at about thirty percent of that level. Our other accounts are pretty much at that level.
Were, were you talking about out-of-district placements?
No, um, just, like, in passing, over the last several weeks with the legislative governor's controversy, um, it's been mentioned that it doesn't hurt us this year to have the money go down, it hurts us next year, so I can't understand which, what categories of things get shifted to the following year, that you're not actually spending them in the current year.
Right.
Apparently, some districts, if I understand correctly, when the budget gets held like that, they're in trouble this week.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And this is apparently not the case for our district.
Not the case for us.
That's correct.
So, transportation is one, what, one that's treated that way, and then revolving funds, we get income for, say, like, nursery school kind of stuff, and then other fees may have similar kinds of stuff. Are there other grant or revenue things from the state that are in that category?
Yes, they're all, they're all required to be spent for the most part, in the current fiscal year. And transportation would be the one area at this point, they, it got cut by the state. Like Michael mentioned earlier, some did get cut this year by the state, but that was money we weren't anticipating for the budget, but if transportation got cut by the state, that's where we would be with those other districts, and we would be in trouble in the current fiscal year, because we do, and have spent that as a current fiscal year revenue. But the rest of them, we generally have tried to spend in the subsequent fiscal year.
I have to jump in, I just learned that there's a whole bunch of people out in the hall waiting to give a presentation, so, um, just a process check here.
And I do have one more, whenever the process comes out to be.
Okay, okay, um, maybe we take a couple more questions related to the budget proposal, and then, um, bring these folks in, I feel bad they've been waiting, and then we can, um, uh, well, maybe take up the rest of the questions on February eleventh, is that fair?
Sure.
Is that...
Well, actually, is this available anywhere?
Uh, we'll be posting it, yeah.
Can I just let her go, because...
Mine will be very brief.
Okay.
It's a nuts and bolts question, I think it's for you, Mr. King, um, it's just at Fulton Advisory, I think it's something that we're hashing out, um, other post-employment benefits. I'm wondering if you guys are funding it at all this year, and how much if you are?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the end of last year FY fourteen surplus health insurance money, there's no, there's no appropriation in the FY sixteen proposed budget.
And what's the total liability?
Twenty, I, I, twenty million, something like that, maybe four, I don't remember, I can read the report if you'd like, I don't, I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
Depending on how you read the actuary report, it's thirty million or forty million, and we're going into debt a million point two a year if we don't pay down the outstanding debt, and we should be doing three million a year if we're going to pay it down over thirty years.
Those numbers are approximately.
So we're now doing a hundred and fifty thousand out of either two million, well, or three million, recognizing that we pay about seven hundred thousand now for current employees that are already retired.
I'm sure that Shannon doesn't want to get into it, but it's not, I don't think it's quite that simplistic, but yes.
But we did say last year, or earlier this year, that we were going to make an effort to fund it every year, so I think we do need to reconsider a line item for that in the budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know you have one more, and we'll get to it.
That's it.
Oh, that's it?
You got it.
Okay. Any other questions, um, been patiently waiting to ask? No, okay. How about from our committee here, any other questions?
I suppose my question would be, come on the eleventh, we're going to be delving into this much more...
Yes, well, on the eleventh, we're going to have every administrator from every building come and sort of make their case to us about what they want included in their budget, but keep in mind that that's all the non-salaried items.
Yes.
So that's only twenty percent of our budget.
All right. So, any questions that we come up with then, before that, sh... will we be able to ask at that?
Absolutely.
At that forum, or?
Yes, I think that... Well, I would like to suggest that we maybe start with questions that came out of tonight, and what we do in the next two weeks as we prepare for the eleventh.
Yes.
And, um, we can start with those, and then dive into the specifics on the non.
Right.
And we have the subsequent meetings, too.
Correct.
So it's about, it'll have to be on the eleventh, we have, yeah.
If, if you have technical, objective questions about, you know, the, the budget document that you'll be getting, you, you can send those via email.
Okay.
And I can respond to them, or Chris can respond to them.
All right, all right. So if they're philosophical, yes, I know, all right, okay.
And what if we have questions for the people that are speaking? Can, can we forward those so that they're prepared?
Sure, that'd be great. That'd be really great.
I mean, I'd rather it be working than just a listening.
Yeah, you have...
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah, be good, advanced questions are always good.
Typically, we ask questions throughout the whole thing, so...
Well, no, and I get that, but anyway. We have not typically directed at all, we just, whatever we can, if we hear it first time, which I don't think is productive.
Welcome.
Come up with questions if you want. So would we send them to Michael or distribute them on?
Yeah.
So, if anyone would like to join us on February eleventh, that's our next, um, meeting, when we're really diving into the budget in a, in a big way, and, um, tonight, we did sort of an overview, a summary, this is what's coming, um, but on the eleventh, it'll be probably three and a half hours maybe, and we're really going to get into details. So, if you'd like to join us, please do, it's a ton of fun. Maybe we're posted, actually. Great.
I think some of us are planning.
Great, that'd be great. All right, um, maybe we need to bring in like a...
And jump, jump to wellness.
And, yeah, is that okay?
Yeah.
What are we skipping?
Nothing that's urgent.
Okay. I just heard that.
Yeah.
Didn't realize they were here.
I, I, well, I mean, I, uh, these people parents right here, I'm just...
They're gathering everyone.
Surprise. I had to persuade over, and I'm sorry, my son's... Just put a next to Ellen, and then on my way after we don't have, you know, he was okay.
Wellness?
Some young girl, like a seventeen-year-old girl, was stuck in a snowbank, and I went over and I just stopped, and he was okay, and of course, she just starts crying, she's like, I've been so many years, I've never been around, I'm like...
Wellness, okay. Like, what is the state actually?
Can we just start speaking?
Um, sure, I mean, I would...
Yes.
Please introduce yourself, I would do it for you, but I don't know you.
Do people stand or sit? Should I do stand or...
Well, you could, whatever makes you happy.
I will stay seated then. Thank you. So, my name is Shawna Croto. I am here tonight with Becky Herberger and Tricia Pishock. We all live in Bolton and we all have children at Florence Sawyer School who have life-threatening food allergies. That is, in the food allergy community, they abbreviate that LTFA. So I'll be referring to that throughout. In September, Tricia, Becky and I formed a group called the Neshoba Food Allergy Education and Awareness, ENFA, with the goal of improving the management of food allergies in our school and throughout the Neshoba District. I want to thank you for allowing us to present tonight and calling the meeting out of order. We appreciate that. And thank the members of the community who are here supporting us. We also appreciate and accept the committee's invitation to the March 4th District Policy Meeting. We're very fortunate to be joined this evening by Jan Hansen, the founder of Educating for Food Allergies in Norwell, Massachusetts. Jan is a nationally recognized food allergy educator, and she's the author of the 2012 book, Food Allergies: A Recipe for Success at School. She provides consulting services and educational workshops to parents and school personnel throughout New England and provides guidance in the writing of school food allergy management policy. As this is an opportunity for us to speak to the representatives from each town, I would like to provide some facts about food allergies, give you a brief overview of ENFA's requests and goals and the impetus behind them. I only have two and a quarter pages here, so it's not too long. Food allergy facts. First, a food allergy is an abnormal response of the immune system when it mistakenly targets a harmless food protein, an allergen, as a threat and attacks it. Reactions can range from mild to severe and life-threatening. Second, the most severe form of an allergic reaction is called anaphylaxis, a potentially fatal allergic reaction. Third, allergic reactions are unpredictable and reactions may progress in minutes to anaphylaxis. Fourth, the pass severity of a food-induced allergic reaction does not predict the severity of a future allergic reaction. Fifth, most food-induced allergic reactions occur from eating an unexpected or hidden ingredient or unknowingly ingesting the allergen. Sixth, according to a New England Journal of Medicine study, four out of six fatalities from food-induced allergic reactions occurred at school. Seven, leading research has found that seven to ten percent of individuals die from food-induced anaphylaxis despite prompt treatment with epinephrine. Last, eight, avoidance is the only way to prevent an accidental ingestion and a possible life-threatening reaction. ENFA has two requests. First, that the Neshoba District develop and implement a new comprehensive, life-threatening food allergy policy, which is consistent with current best practice guidelines, which will have representation from all stakeholders, and which will be compatible with state and federal laws and regulations. And second, that this new policy be a dedicated LTFA policy, one that is not embedded within the district's health and wellness policy. ENFA's goal is to work collaboratively with the Neshoba School Committee in the development and implementation of this type of policy throughout the district schools. A dedicated, comprehensive LTFA policy will better ensure the safety, physical and emotional health, and full access to academic and enrichment opportunities for the growing number of students with food allergies in our schools across all grade levels. A great deal of progress has been made in the area of food allergy management in schools over the last ten years. This progress has been the result of advocacy, education, and collaboration between the food allergy community, educators, healthcare professionals, and policymakers nationwide, as well as evidence-based findings from scientific and medical research in the field. Together, these extensive efforts have led not only to the development of today's current and recommended best practices for the management of LTFA in schools, but they also form the basis for state and federal guidelines. The Mass Department of Education Guidelines of 2002, the CDC Guidelines of 2013, are two examples of guidelines created to assist schools in the management of food allergies. Tragically and very soberingly, the 2002 Massachusetts Guidelines for the Management of Life-Threatening Food Allergies in Schools were created and implemented in response to three food allergy-related deaths in Massachusetts schools between 1999 and 2001. In regards to our request for a comprehensive LTFA policy for our district, it is ENFA's belief that the current food allergy management practices within Neshoba's health and wellness policy do not adequately provide for the health and safety of students with LTFA in their school-sponsored activities, nor do they meet these current recommended best practices, state and federal guidelines. The successful management of food allergies in schools requires two distinct plans. The first is a plan for prevention of food allergy exposure. The second is a plan for the treatment of an allergic reaction if it occurs. As it stands now, our district's prevention plan for students with food allergies is inadequate. Between May 2013 and December 2014, at least two students that we are aware of with food allergies within the Neshoba District have experienced food-induced allergic reactions while at school, requiring the administration of epinephrine. Studies have shown that the schools whose food allergy management plans rely heavily on a treatment plan for a reaction rather than an effective prevention plan that reduces the risk of allergen exposure are putting students' lives at risk. In regards to our request for a dedicated LTFA policy, the National School Board Association, the Mass DOE, and the CDC all recommend a dedicated LTFA policy for schools. This type of policy is essential to guide a school district in the implementation of a coordinated approach to managing food allergies to reduce allergen exposure and thereby the risk of life-threatening allergic reactions. We ask you to help us develop this new policy. Thank you very much for your time. Do we have time for Jan to speak?
Oh, absolutely. But I was just wondering, I mean, you've gone through all this work and I'm glad that you're going to meet with the policy. Have you developed a policy yourself? The part you would like to have happen?
We have that written down?
Yep.
We do. We didn't know if it was...
We didn't bring it to, you know, we didn't think it was a...
We've gone through a lot of what we've seen in the state, online, as recommended policies. We've gone through the Mass DOE Guidelines, the CDC recommended guidelines, and kind of put everything together in terms of what we think an optimal policy would look like. So, ENFA has that. So, it could be a jumping-off point if that's something that could be helpful to the school committee.
Is your name Jan?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lorraine. It's nice to meet you. Thanks for coming. I have to say, first of all, that I think what you guys are doing is heroic on behalf of not just your own children. I don't have children with life-threatening allergies, but on behalf of the parents who don't have a voice, thank you, and you have my support.
We thank you.
And Becky has been working with me, or not working with me, but explaining about what you guys have had to go through to get to this point, to get to be heard. And what I would like to know from you, Jan, is if you do this type of work regularly, are there other schools, other districts that have built policies that you think are particularly well-written that you could share with us so that we could review them?
I do. I have a couple. Every district, the policies, some mimic each other with some twists and turns depending upon the district. Some are a paragraph or woefully wanting on information. Others are very specific and very good. So I do have some I'd be delighted to share with you.
If you could do that, I mean, through these ladies or whatever, and then bubble it up to those of us?
And it's a great starting point for you then to look at it and make adjustments.
And actually, I think what would be nice is if you guys are coming to the policy subcommittee meeting, if you could get ahold of those, take a look at them, see what works for you, what doesn't work for you, and then we can work on it from there.
We also have a folder for everybody. And within that folder tonight, there's a table of contents. And one of the pages is, it's a list of schools in Massachusetts that have LTFA policies. Some of the ones that Jan has recommended to us as ones that she really likes.
Some of those are not awesome. They're just...
I'd like to hear what Jan thinks is awesome. She's the expert. You guys are the parents that will then look at what she recommends.
And it's a hard choice. There are, I'm sure, many, many more districts within the state that have policies that I'm not aware of also. I think the policies that work best are those that are, that set the tone for the district for how we're going to manage this health issue for the students that have it in the district. It needs to be really focused on prevention, and that's something that I believe in, that I've been doing in my work for all these years. Something that we're so fortunate to have the Mass DOE Guidelines. We were the first state to actually do that. And so, other states modeled their guidelines off of the state of Massachusetts. So, prevention as the primary focus of a district policy is what needs to be done. The CDC guidelines, so now we have education world and the health world that are saying the same things. They've come out now in 2013, October, saying the primary focus of a policy of managing these students needs to be prevention. The second is treatment. Not to be forgotten, primary focus, prevention. So, having protocols that address that. District policies that make it clear that we're looking for conformity across the district, that will also allow for individual needs of students to be met based on diagnosis, and that also outlines for staff what their responsibilities are within that policy. So that really, that sets the groundwork for a working policy. I also love the policies that provide resources at the back so that they have, so staff, if they have other questions, know where to go and look for help. So that would be, I think, the framework that I would start for an excellent, comprehensive policy.
So whatever you think, you think is well-done and the students in that district are well-served, you could share a couple of those.
Sure, absolutely.
Anything?
I can't imagine why anybody would have objections to anything that you might propose. I'm resident of Bolton and my daughter has a life-threatening allergy and went through Florence Sawyer and the high school and never had an episode at school. So, I always thought the policies were pretty good, but what do I know? And if there's a way to make them better, then let's do it.
I think that's where, that's where a lot of this came from. I had heard Jan speak at the Food Allergy Research and Education, the National Food Allergy Convention in Chicago in June. And once you learn something, you can't unknow it. And once I learned that this stuff was out there, you can't unknow it. So.
I think it's really important to recognize that we learned so much from the medical research that's been done, the scientific research that's been done, and the work from the professional organizations out there, the Food Allergy Research and Education that Shawna was referring to, and to our own Department of Education, the Department of Public Health here in Massachusetts. For years, we're also unique. Ann Sheets was the director of the School Health Unit, and she's now retired. But she was unique in the country for taking data, whenever a student receives epinephrine for an allergic reaction, to take that data and to analyze it. And her point is to try, we need to learn from these incidents so that we can avoid them from happening again. And one thing that we've learned from this data is that confirms what we've known across the country from other research, that school is a high-risk environment for these kids. And secondly, that within our state Massachusetts statistic, year after year after year, the classroom, you would think the cafeteria would be the highest-risk place, but it isn't. It's the classroom is the highest risk, and that hasn't changed in all the years that they've been doing it. And we know that, I think, if there's any concerns about how does a child get exposed, even trace amounts, so when we're talking trace amounts, we're talking about amounts that you can't physically see with the naked eye, are capable if a person is exposed to that allergen of eliciting an allergic reaction and potentially anaphylaxis if it's not recognized and not treated properly. So, for these kids, they're not, that are having reactions, they're not doing it knowingly. It's accidental ingestion that is causing this. And, and so, that's why the Mass DOE came out with their guidelines, that's why the CDC, because we need to figure out what are practical, reasonable procedures that can be implemented in a school setting to help reduce that from occurring so that these kids can focus on their learning and be in a safe learning environment and let that be the first priority. I think it's really important also to recognize that school is a unique environment from the home. In these homes, decisions, proactive decisions are being made every single day in terms of what foods are going to be in that house and what foods aren't going to be in that house and where we're going to go to restaurants. Which restaurants get it will help us, which are we going to avoid? You know, what places are we going to visit for our activities and which ones are we going to avoid? School is different than that because these kids are placed in a, you know, they have to go to school. They're assigned to a school. They're assigned to a teacher. They're not the ones that are making the decisions about what foods are going to be in this confined space in which they also need to focus on learning and be a student. And we know there are a lot of things that go into being a student, a lot of factors. So, they're not making determinations when allergens are in to say, "I require you to wash your hands and I require that surface to happen, to be washed." And so, you know, any time that we can take the responsibility, as we should, I think, as educators in that setting, to reduce the risk, allow these kids to learn safely, that should be the goal. And as I say, we, you're not starting from scratch because you have profoundly resourceful, evidence-based information that have given reasonable recommendations on how to do that in the CDC Guidelines and the Mass DOE Guidelines. One other thing that I, you asked about policy, and I do want to go back to that for a second. I think it's very important that policies respect and address both the physical safety and the emotional safety and well-being of the children because these kids are going through their developmental maturity, just like any other student. So there are going to be different ages and different things that are going on. So policies that...
So what do you mean by that?
So I mean, we're not going to isolate that child and say, "You're going to go in the back of the room." Or, "We're going to do this program here. Our academic curriculum is going to involve this, but you're going to do this over here." Or, "You're going to be doing something different." You know, or, you know, "We're all going to have an event in the classroom, but you're going to do something a little bit differently." So I think that we need to respect the emotional requirements of the kids as well as the physical. And that's my feeling, but it's also the CDC Guidelines feelings. And it's up front, I think, on page three of the DOE Guidelines. So it's really important to address the whole student, you know, that whole person.
And I think also, Lorraine, to your point of like, what's the emotional impact? A lot of times in the classrooms, you know, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, desks are placed together, you know, in a group of, say, four or six. And to your point, oftentimes in our classrooms, there have been, there's the peanut table or the nut table where kids can sit. But if a child has an allergy to wheat or dairy and there's a working snack and that child is sitting next to a desk where someone is eating yogurt or a Triscuit, that's not typically thought of as, well, that child doesn't need to sit at that allergen table. And so then, that child isn't required to wash his or her hands or the desk, and then you're expecting the child sitting at the desk next to him to be able to concentrate on his or her work. And, you know, these kids, they have all different personalities, but oftentimes, you know, they can be pretty vigilant and that can be very distracting, you know, to a kid.
I bet a lot of that is awareness too, you know?
Absolutely.
It's just fairness to the school and in fairness to the other kids who are sitting next to you and in fairness to the teacher. And I'm not suggesting you're saying something different, but I think a lot of it is awareness and just a little bit of training.
Definitely.
In addition to the hard and fast policies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know my kids were at a peanut-free or non-peanut-free and we thought we were doing the right thing. So and I think that the school really does want to do the right thing, especially having known Joel Bates for as long as I have. So, yeah, just bring it to us and we'll work with you.
Do you find that policies need to vary among age ranges?
I think they're, I think that they should meet the individual needs of the students. So the policy needs to be written in such a way that allows it to be interpreted as the child matures. But I don't think that should be imposed upon the child because we all age and mature differently. We know that. So, yeah, it's going to change naturally. Things will be different. The curriculum, I don't think should ever have a child's allergen involved in the curriculum, no matter what age. But yeah, things evolve, but it should be done in a way that meets that child's need, not a blanket set of rules and policies and procedures.
So when you're saying we need to have a set policy, we are going to be looking more at individual... Obviously, we're not going to be writing a policy, a district-wide policy for David Jones.
Correct.
But we need to...
But we need to address specific allergies, specific?
I think, I think what you're asking is the policy should say that, you know, we're going to meet the needs of the child. For example, the medical diagnosis, what is the history of anaphylaxis? Does the child have asthma? What is the physician, you know, saying? And so you take that policy and you determine, I don't think it is a safe way to go to have a blanket decision to have a school that doesn't allow for allergen-safe classrooms. I think that it has to be based on the individual needs of the student.
So in other words, you're saying it's not about peanuts and not peanuts, it's about how you clean the classroom, how you, I mean, it's broader than that. You're saying behavioral changes.
I'm saying that I think if it's medically indicated to have selective allergen restriction for a student, that that needs to be addressed.
And I'm just looking, we don't have to, but I'm just thinking, you know, how you put that into practice is what I was.
Sounds like a 504.
Well, that's what I was thinking too. I mean.
I mean, you started off good and then you went to 504.
Well, but students who are diagnosed with a life-threatening allergy, the actual obligation of the school is to, through trial, find to have a eligibility to place that child on a Section 504 plan.
So is everybody with an allergy on 504?
In our district, not everybody.
And it really is everyone that's got a diagnosis of life-threatening. That's the key language.
Which is to be life-threatening?
If I can just step back for just one second, going back to, remember when we talked about, like, the wording in the cafeteria? A student is not required to sit at a peanut-free table, but a peanut-free table will be provided for the student. So the wording of the policies makes it that way.
Okay. I think that.
Absolutely. So you have a policy that can be interpreted based on the individual needs of each student with this diagnosis.
And you'll see that, at least from what we've seen, looking at policies, that's how policies tend to be worded.
So you're saying you don't want that or you do want that?
That's how the policies, the wording within the policies that we've looked at and that Jan has provided for us have wording that allows for, you know, it doesn't say, child with peanut allergy must sit at peanut-free table. Child, you know, peanut-free table will be provided for the child to sit at.
So it's there, they consider it current?
It's that wording.
So do you need a wheat-free, egg-free, milk-free table?
You know what? Yeah. We're getting into probably the need to create the policy wording, but there are certainly ways to word things so that children are protected from their allergens.
But you know what, let's do that policy because I think what you said was it's the classroom that's the biggest concern, not the lunchroom.
Lunchroom's concern. And every, if you look at the DPH stats, every area of the school has had symptoms of anaphylaxis appear. So classroom being the highest, the largest amount, percentage of episodes of anaphylaxis happened in the classroom, year after year after year. But every area of the school, I mean, outside gym, recess, cafeteria, nurse's office, it's.
Right, if you think about it, maybe not that I'm downplaying any, but certainly not. But that's probably where most of the time is in the classroom. So the odds of it, just.
Also, I think when you've got food that's being eaten in the classroom is going to, and again, as I said earlier, confined space. If that allergen, if that allergic food is in the classroom and there aren't required, you know, precautions to help reduce that from cross-contact or tactile, you know, then we've got problems.
Along with the policy to cover all life-threatening food allergies, is how can we be better about making sure the kids have the 504 plan? 504, though? And I would think a medical plan for that, to make sure we have that too, would be a big part of it. And that's how we can truly, really individualize it for each child. As with one with a kid who had, you know, type 1 diabetes or whatever, we would have to meet their needs and best, you know, to keep them healthy.
Absolutely.
I think we need to really.
We have information about that in the packets we'll be giving out to as well.
Yeah, only one other thing I want to say in terms of, you know, the statistics that I think we can learn so much from, that every year in Massachusetts, there are, on average, from these analyzed data from the DPH, Mass DPH, there are on average 200 kids who are receiving epinephrine during the school day because they're exposed to their allergen. Some years, it's a little bit less, some years, it's a little bit more than that. And the majority of that is to food-induced anaphylaxis. So I do want to point out, any time that we have access to information to help us reduce those types of things from happening, then, that have been deemed to be reasonable, I think that's so important to do. Because although in the past, since the time that Sean had talked about, the catalyst, major catalyst for our guidelines here in the state, the three deaths, each year, we're having 200 individuals. I think the seven, eight-year total is something like 1,300 students have received epinephrine in Massachusetts schools. It is a traumatic, life-threatening event, and we're all very blessed and lucky that these didn't end up in fatalities. But if we can reduce that from happening and we know how because we have the resources to tell us that, I think we need to do that.
Of those 200, and it'd be great to reduce the number, do you find that any of those are repeats? Are they learning from mistakes? I mean, does the district change?
That's a very good question, I don't know. That would be a question for the department.
Because that would, that would be interesting. And then in the policies that you've seen, I know that there's probably a lot of awareness in that.
I'm sorry?
In the policies that you've seen that you like, there's a lot of awareness.
Yes.
Do you see empowerment of the child at all or dependency on everybody else? I mean, I'm just wondering, because I would rather empower a child to know, you know, what's going on.
Right, I think these kids, there was another person who wrote a book on the emotional aspects of food allergies. And what she found is that kids as young as three years old are aware of their allergies.
And they self-advocate or?
Of course they are. And these kids do self-advocate for themselves, and they do this on a regular basis. They're very much aware of their allergens. But as I said a few minutes ago, school is a unique environment, and it's not like the real world. And teenage years are considered a risk factor for food-induced anaphylaxis for a whole host of reasons. Because you may have a child who, as a young child, and we all come with different personalities too. These kids are looking out for themselves, and I don't want anybody to make a mistake about that. They are, but they are also students, and they are also entitled to that safe learning environment. So I think that they're doing these kinds of things both in school and outside of school. So they're, it's a process as growth and development is for any child.
Thank you very much for coming.
One last question to you. I was a little concerned when you said that it was difficult to get you.
Well. She's just been working on it for a long time because her kids have food allergies.
Yeah, it's just been a long process for us to do all the research. And we do have folders for you with a lot of information. We have pages, reference pages, and we have suggested resources. We also have the Department of Health, the data brief of the epinephrine in here. And I'm missing something, some graphics that we put together that I'm used at Florence Sawyer School.
Yes, I love you, yes.
And for the policy, we will get you all the information before that policy meeting that you need. Do we have, do we have?
Do we have?
Do we have any extra? Oh, we have extra because people aren't here. Who should I give that?
Can you drop off to Karen for policy?
Oh, I'm going to see her at policy.
Do you want to take?
I want to see her Friday.
Right. Do we need more?
Nope.
Okay. So anything that we can get to you for the policy writing meeting, we will do that, and we do have extensive information.
I'm not surprised.
The data health brief that's put out by the Mass Department of Public Health, and I can't, I should be, you know, on the circuit to promote them because I think they do a fantastic job, as does the Mass DOE. But the data health brief, the last report that was analyzed and made public was 2009, 2010, and I believe that's the report that's in this book. The data is still collected whenever a student receives epinephrine during the school day. So they have the numbers. They haven't, because of staffing issues, they have not analyzed them, or if they have, they haven't made them public. But they're still collecting the data for that information.
So that's why the one that you have is from the year 2009, 2010?
That's the last one that was made public.
Do you know whether they published the next one?
I don't know. Ann Sheets retired, and I don't know if they're going to stay the course on that. They will always collect it because whenever a school nurse gives epi, they are required to fill out a report. So they'll be, they'll still have basic information, all this wonderful information that we've had for about eight years, I don't know if we're going to continue to have. But we can learn a lot from the eight years. Each report, if you read them, they're so consistent in terms of the information that they glean from it and the recommendations that they offer from it.
So just so everybody knows sort of how the process works for us, and maybe you already are perfectly aware of this. So whenever there's a policy that needs to be either written or rewritten, we have a policy subcommittee, that's a subset of this group around this table, that's usually three people. And they will rewrite or write a policy and then bring it to the full committee for approval or disapproval, but I can't imagine why it would be disapproved. But so while you're going, the next step to meet with the policy subcommittee, that's the right thing to do because that's where they will generate a new policy and then bring it to us for a vote for the whole committee to approve. So that's how it works.
Does that sometimes, like, say, going to that meeting, does it sometimes take a couple of meeting times to go?
Sometimes. Yeah, it depends. I mean, if you came in and had a policy that was, you know, kind of like, perfect, might just take one time.
And then what about the implementation of that? Because it sounds like, I mean, the implementation would certainly be, say, our goal was reached and we all did decide we want this new policy, we agree on it, you guys say yes, and it gets approved. And then there's the implementation of it, which involves the nurses and the district. It's like everybody from three towns, everybody coming together and kind of learning it. So that seems to be like.
You maybe could answer that better.
Yeah, I mean, when we went through the process of writing our policy now 10 years ago, the original policy, we had, again, a wonderful parent group, so this is great to be revisiting again with parents. And our school nurses, our school nurse leader will be in on the policy meeting as well so that she can advise us accordingly as well. And then we'll look at what changes there are, decide on an implementation plan which would include some PD for whomever we think needs it. And that would happen over the summer, either in June or August, we've got a timetable, implementation as well.
So it's, so that could be a possibility?
Yes, oh, yeah.
A big new goal. Jan, I was reading this thing, it says 25% of the cases didn't have a known condition when they had the reaction, yet 51% of them were given epinephrine.
Yeah. So every year, statistically, there are 25% of incidents of anaphylaxis in Massachusetts school, and these figures are consistent with, across the nation, but certainly play out here in our state where a child is previously undiagnosed or hasn't, there's no paperwork that the school has to tell them that the child has.
They wouldn't have a pen.
So they would not have a pen, which is very exactly right. They don't have epinephrine at school. So most schools, and I'm assuming that you do, have a stock supply of epinephrine exactly for that. Now, the stock epi can only be given by the school nurse because it requires the ability to assess and make a determination, right? But this is, this also speaks back to your question, Lorraine, about what would a policy do? Part of what you're talking about too in the implementation is the outreach, is the communication of what the policy is and what's required. And so for 25%, 1 in 4, this student required epinephrine, and nobody at the school knew that they had an allergic disease. But what does that tell us? That tells us how important the general education about food allergies is for the entire staff so that they can recognize signs and symptoms of anaphylaxis because that's a significant number. So that education piece is so, so important.
Sounds like professional development.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So they wouldn't just give you bingo?
They could, but it wouldn't work, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, epinephrine is the only medicine that can reverse the symptoms of anaphylaxis. And as I said, it's really, really good at it, but it's also not 100%. It's not approved. And we've had in Massachusetts in the past year, 2013, we have two students, not during school time, but two students who had anaphylaxis, received epi, in fact, more than once, and passed. So these are real episodes that these folks, and all of you, thanks to you for listening and addressing it, are trying to avoid from happening here in this district.
Now, did they have trouble because they couldn't recognize what?
I don't know this, for some, no. I mean, for one student, no. They, a woman, young girl from Hopkinton, they did recognize the symptoms right away, and she was given epinephrine right away. Most of the time it works, it's not 100%.
And a lot of that number, Lynn, is because the kids don't know they have an allergy yet.
The 25% is. The 25% is.
Right. But I mean, that's.
I mean, my daughter was just still pretty old by the time we figured it out. I mean, because she'd never been exposed to that thing before.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it.
Okay. The only thing that we have to do, Mike, is the lease.
Okay, I went through a circle of things I thought we had to do. We have to vote on the lease.
Oh, the module?
No.
The lease, is that the van?
It's the van, yes.
Oh, we already talked about that.
Yeah.
I think that's a, I thought we already did that.
We approved the financing, and then there was a caveat in language that required a specific motion that needs to be actually, the actual words have to be there.
Is that written anywhere that we can?
Just for moral support or something specific?
No, I was just here to support.
He's just a great guy. You did a great job.
Thank you, Joel. Drive safe. So the specific language is that for you to approve the authorizing resolution. It's a specific document required by the lender. We need the words "authorizing resolution" in the motion.
I make the motion to approve the authorizing resolution for the lease of.
2014 van.
Second, all those in favor?
What is the wording of the lender? I'm not really sure why the lender is requesting.
Like, anytime you go buy a loan, they want you to sign a million forms. It's the same thing. It's technically the legal authority under the leases with the school committee. You have to vote to authorize use.
The modular purchase, we don't have to do that?
So it's not an actual vote that we need, I just wanted to, we kind of talked about it informally. As I mentioned in the budget presentation, there is money in the budget for the modular to come forward to the high school. Unless, and this would be the opportunity for you to say differently because the town of Stowe is now counting, you know, based on the informal I shared with Bill Ripley. So this would be the opportunity, if you informally or formally want to take a motion to say you are going to accept them, this is the time.
There's only one?
It's one, but it's double.
Two classrooms, and what, I think, full disclosure, can't we say how much it costs?
For the moving, yeah.
Yeah, it's still expensive.
It's about $85,000.
Didn't we vote on this before?
We didn't vote, we had a consent, essentially, committee.
Oh, all right, so you need. $85,000 just to move it?
Move, moves and hookup.
Oh, so.
It's about $25,000, I think we're hearing, to move it, and the rest would be to hook up.
And what is the initial cost of the double one?
Zero, they're giving us.
That's true.
Oh, okay.
That part is good.
So it would cost us roughly $85,000? So it would cost us roughly eighty-five thousand dollars to accept it, basically.
Right.
So is this a not to exceed number or...
Well, it's really what it is, what it is, right?
Yeah, I mean...
And we know that we have a way to use this.
We have to give Perry some relief. He, you know, without getting into too much detail, we're over ninety percent capacity in the high school. And that sounds like, well, he still has ten percent, but actually that doesn't work that way. He is working so hard.
He wants these things, right?
He needs them. I don't care if he wants them. He needs them.
Okay.
We have to do this. We have to do this. It's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
But it's not a fix for the school's problems, but it will relieve, it's like a safety, it's like a little valve that'll just let off some pressure for him.
What is it going to relieve? Two, two classrooms?
Fifty students. They'll be able to schedule that.
Fifty per period.
Per period.
We're gonna put twenty-five kids in each one of those...
So to give it sense, we have...
My, my kid was, I, I did have a kid in one of those classrooms. Looks like he's gonna go back there, too.
My kid would, it would envy, would, would, do you have an envy?
He'd get a condition.
Was that in my...
No, I like, I like the double wide fine. Eighty-five thousand dollars to me doesn't sound like a drop in the bucket. I mean, that's just... And so I know there needs to be some sort of relief. I just want to know that, that this, for the money spent, is the best...
For now.
Well, for now. I mean, and I, is this the best Band-Aid we can buy right now?
We are fortunate to have this Band-Aid. We are fortunate that we do not have to purchase temporary units. We're fortunate that we don't have to go through and build another little structure and try to figure out how it works. We are really fortunate. I'm just, I'm sad that we don't have both of them. But we're really, honestly, after having sat through these meetings, it's, the...
I, I get it. I, I get it.
And maybe a way to put it in perspective, let's say we have, have them for ten years before a final solution is resolved. So it's eight, eight and a half thousand dollars per year.
How much did you win there? What was it, two hundred thousand dollars for the one?
No, I think we paid, kind of, so, two fifty then.
And that's just a, there wasn't even to hook it up.
That was a good one, Michael.
No.
That was a good one. I like that. Did you just compliment him?
No.
It's on camera. I'm taking it. Don't take it away from me.
Alright, I move to accept the modular purchase. Does it need to be more follow up than that?
Well, it's not a purchase.
It's not a purchase. We agreed to, I would make the motion to be, we agree to take a gift of the double modular from the town of Stowe.
Okay. I make a motion.
I'm sorry, hold on, but are we agreeing to a number right now? Are we agreeing to...
The cost.
In this motion, no. You're only agreeing to take them so that we formally can tell them so they can make, begin their planning in the town of Stowe.
Alright, now what, if we don't agree to the cost later?
Well, essentially, I'm...
No. So right now, we're agreeing to whatever cost, whatever cost we're gonna take.
We're essentially, yes.
Yeah. And he's saying...
Can we say that to say...
I've been treated by the group with projects.
No, I don't think it's going to, they've looked at it, but if, but if we're down...
You got my porch. Let me tell you the story of my porch.
No, not now.
But if we're down there with a lot of this foundation mostly hooked up and we're ten thousand dollars over, I mean, you know, so...
Yeah, but you know, it would make her feel better than if they, and me also, if you said, you know, a number not to exceed and then you can talk about it later, at least it, it gives us a sense of, okay, we should have tried.
Well, you could do that. We can have that.
But here are what they gave you. Eighty-five thousand, Michael.
Bill Clary did the estimate based on talking with the town and, because they already moved a set to their DPW.
You're the stove money man over there, so...
I think the DPW did some, did transformation and moving for about a hundred thousand dollars. Showers, plumbing, the budget.
We don't need showers.
So, so for about a hundred thousand dollars, give and take a few or a number of thousands of dollars, that's what it took for them to move and install it.
You know, we're not, we're not doing as many enhancements, but we have to physically move it further and it costs by the...
Right.
And it's a lot further, yeah. And then there's police involved. It's a double wide, so it's, it's a little complicated.
If I count it to four sections, so...
Oh, okay.
Did you want to say something else?
I just have a question. If, if you're spending money or designating money, what account is it coming out of? Or what might it come out of if you haven't done so?
So this would come out of our capital plan and as I mentioned, it would be out of our FY sixteen budget.
So we're gonna see that on the budget?
Correct.
So is that trouble to move it in May if sixteen hasn't happened yet?
My conversations with Mr. Ribbley, the town administrator, is that it's, it's okay and they're scheduled not to do it until July.
Great.
Okay. Did we have a motion?
I started.
Okay.
Am, am I putting a cap on it, what we spend?
Yeah.
I, I would, because we can always come, I mean, right now, we're just going to go back to them and say we want.
Right, that's exactly right.
Motion to agree to accept the gift from Stowe of the double wide modular units with the cost not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Well, that case, it's not gonna happen.
Grandma! We got Grandma's money!
Obviously, you're spending Grandma's money.
You're gonna tell your Grandma's dad we're not using their money.
It's gone.
Think that's too much?
Yeah. He said eighty-five.
He said eighty-five.
I know, but they come back with ninety. We're gonna have to come back and do the whole thing.
Can we come back and revise it?
Yeah, you can, but you can't.
But it's gonna be...
It's gonna be a... It's not like we can say no at that point.
Well, you could, but it would be...
Yeah, he's gonna work for the number. I mean, you just have to take the first number.
Well, so then, I'm wondering what the value of you putting the cap on is at all.
It just makes me nervous because Brian Burke was saying, how much, how much make me an offer? And it's like, I don't want to make you an offer. You said you could give it to us for free. All we want to do is pay for the transportation, alright? Period. The transportation is the transportation. Since we don't know what it is...
Well, twenty-five thousand for the transportation.
That's what it is? And the hookup is?
The rest.
Sixty. The sixty?
Yeah, because...
Well, then, what the heck, say eighty-five and if we need to call a quick meeting, I swear to God, I'll drive to everybody's houses and bring it here because we need them. Shush. Whatever. We need it. Say a hundred, whatever.
No, eighty-five.
I made the motion. You can either second it or not.
Yeah, somebody seconded it.
What is it? Eighty-five or a hundred?
Hundred.
Okay. And it's been seconded. All those in favor?
I'm gonna go down on this.
Lynn, put your hand up.
I'm not for a hundred. You're giving him too much.
Okay.
It's fifteen thousand dollars, but...
We're not giving Stowe anything. We're just paying, we're just getting this moving things.
This is gonna be the budget.
Well, contracting for, but we won't spend it if we don't have a budget.
Yeah.
Guarantee you that.
That was one, two, three, four.
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 Got that?
Yes.
What is Nicole, when she...
She's abstaining.
All those opposed?
No, I'm voting no.
Oh.
Okay, two opposed.
So we're gonna see a line item on the budget that says relocation of this trailer, a hundred thousand dollars.
No, because we're, it's not for the sixteen, but we're gonna say for eighty-five. It's not to exceed, she said. Not to exceed.
He's gonna have a hundred.
It better not be.
Because he's gonna have to reduce it some way. It's gonna be a hundred.
It's in a blended line, but it spells it out, but it's there, so...
You're not gonna put in a hundred thousand dollars in the budget until we know what it's gonna cost. You're gonna know what that is soon, right?
Well, I mean, we'll know, we know what it is generally now, like...
You just said sixty plus twenty-five. Eighty-five, whole joke.
That's our, that's our estimates, but I mean, you know...
We have to take that back.
If we take that as whole...
I made up the sixty because I subtracted the twenty-five from the eighty-five.
I know, shush. We weren't supposed to say that.
Alright, it's proof anyway. Sorry, folks.
Alright, so is there anything else that we have to do tonight? It's nine fifteen.
Not happened.
I think the only thing is, aren't, aren't we meeting as a policy committee on Friday to talk about the survey?
Yes.
So without, I thought the whole point to meet on Friday was to go over the feedback of the committee.
Yeah, that's true.
Sorry.
Anything bad happen?
Morning, Lori.
I have some feedback. I mean, I don't, do we want to talk about it now?
Well, if we're meeting, I, I, we can reschedule a meeting, but...
No, because we want to get it done. What do you want?
Are you meeting with these guys? Is that a different meeting?
No, it's a different meeting.
That's a difference. We're meeting this Friday about this survey.
Oh, okay. Well, should we forge on then?
Forge on. I can't see anything. I don't, oh my gosh, this is the problem today. I just keep making the screen bigger.
So is, is it on here? Am I missing something?
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah.
Like under school agenda either.
In the show, but it's just...
I read it. I thought it was excellent.
It's good feedback.
What I do have some specific feedback to.
Yes.
Give it. If anybody else is ready to go, feel free.
I can tell you when Rain's ready.
We're both ready.
Where is it? Why isn't it jumping out at me? It was here before.
It's still there?
Yeah.
Oh, I got it. I got it. Thank you. I have a couple of initial reactions. First, excellent. Second, I'm fearful it's too long because I really want teachers to do it. And I'm fearful that this is like overwhelming. That's my first reaction. My second reaction is I thought that we got a little too personal with them in one particular section.
Where? Which one?
Which didn't really pertain to the district, but was more about their personal teaching style and dreams and hopes and aspirations. And I didn't think that that was really relevant first.
Is that work environment?
That is...
I'm committed to see my school, district succeed, that one?
Oh, it was more about...
Go to like the end of the twenties, the beginning of the thirties. Is that the...
Here, here it is. My work gives me a feeling of accomplishment. My work makes good use of my skills and abilities. That I feel is too much, not related to the district or what we have control over, but is more about the teacher's personal fulfillment. I, I felt like the, there were too many questions about the respect. I, I think they're important, but I think that maybe we could reduce that section.
The school district culture?
It's under work environment.
And the, what the respect, is there...
Well, it, it said the students in my school respect, show respect for our staff. And then it says, I remember reading them again that the...
Yeah, that's a lot of respect.
There's a lot of respect questions.
R-E-S-P-E-C-T.
Well, I, I guess what I, if, if you have a question, I mean, I would ask them, what were you thinking when you, well, I mean, I'd like, I'd actually like the format because it's quick and easy. There's not a lot left to do. And the zero through ten was kind of annoying because you had to, so I really like this. Because this will be really quick to go through. So what were you thinking when you wrote all this? On the, under the work environment?
Well, specifically of, of just morale, when you're, you know, when you're in your work environment.
Because one of the, one of the meas things was, you know, do the teachers feel respected? Do the teachers feel that they have what they need? So it's actually not, because this is, is this coming up in EAS or no? Okay.
No, we didn't even look at meas. I mean, we respected, but we didn't leverage it. What's that? Oh my God, Michael!
Happening, Lorraine.
Sickening.
I just can't complain.
So, so my question is, how would, when these all come in, is it just going to be like, one, two, three, four, about six, so it'll be a six, you know, come back and just gonna average them?
Uh, the way the tool, well, alright, so we'll answer that, but then we have to go back to resolve Nancy's concerns. So the way the tool works is you put it in, it assigns a number value to each response. And then it gives you the total number of each response for each question. So like question fifty would have, you know, fifty strongly agree, thirty-nine, you know, agree, whatever the rest of the allocation is for the responses. So I wouldn't look, you can look at the mean, you could look at the average of all of those, but it does give you those...
And you can parse it however you want, like if you just want to pull out, you know, how center is answered.
Okay.
I mean, for the, for how, how they qualify themselves in the very beginning of the, of the survey, yes. So you can't, you can put whoever put, they just teach three through five. So you can just take all of the teachers out of the whole district or you can just take, you know, from one building or...
So the way you've got these, the highlights though, it's the school and district culture. Would that be, does it look at as a whole or each one of these things individual?
You, you could do it any way, either way.
That's why this, this was a pain in the neck up front, right? You're like, oh, this is tedious. But this is what's gonna allow us to look across the district within a school, across a grade span. With, you know, we can look at people who've been here for a long time and people who, Michael had a great, oh no. Michael had a, you know, input. And his suggestion was, yeah, we do want to keep that in because when people have only been here for a year and a half are kind of like, oh, it's all new and it's cool, but once you've been here for a while, you're like, I'm starting to see where we could do better.
Okay.
So going back to Nancy's, Nancy, do, so Nicole, you, do the respect issue, do you feel like you need more?
That was just an example of one that I thought was repetitive.
Really repetitive.
That maybe in the interest of trying to shorten it, that would maybe, maybe there were two questions about respect instead of, I think there might be four.
No, there's a lot more than that because you're looking at, you're looking at administrators... The Q forty-eight, the Q fifty-three is all about respect. Right, and I, and I would say we probably should talk about length and then come back to that. I really feel strongly that this is the first year we're doing this. And what we talked about was, you know, we need a baseline. We like, we need to get to, what's our baseline? And from this baseline, the following year, or if we decide to do it annually, every two years, we're able to look at, okay, this is what we did last year. These are the issues or these are the areas we think we need to find out a little bit more about, and then we can delve into them. We don't have to do the full survey every year, but we will have a baseline on it. We should be replicating the whole thing every two years, but we don't have to do it all. And we don't have anything right now just for the teachers. So this is kind of populating a database of knowledge and...
But I thought that there were teacher surveys that...
There are, there are school-based surveys.
Yeah, that are, surveys of teachers.
Right, but that are different questions, so they're specific to...
So there isn't a district-wide one?
There isn't a district-wide one.
In regards to the respect questions, I, I agree with you and it was like, oh, this is a lot. But I think if I, if, if I were a teacher and you said to me, if you'd asked me these questions, do the students respect me? Do I, do I respect the students? Does the principal respect me? Do my peers respect me? Those are like different perspectives of morale. I really wouldn't be afraid to ask just one, though. Exactly.
But do you think a teacher's really gonna say, I strongly disagree. I don't respect my students at all? Is that a...
I don't think we can, I don't think we can put, I don't, I think it's a valid question. I mean, it goes to our, are you happy here or are you not happy here? But I also think that I'm not gonna suggest that somebody won't answer a question if they don't want to. We told them, you don't have to. Skip it and move on. And maybe we don't get responses on some and we don't ever ask them again.
I guess I'm just wondering what the value of that response is. Do you respect your students? Because is, I can't imagine a teacher saying no. If they, if they do, they should not be teachers. I mean...
It's true.
So...
What would we do with that information? Because we couldn't, we couldn't go back and pinpoint who that was?
I think it wasn't, it wasn't trying to find out if they don't respect their students. I think it was a way to look at a three sixty perspective of morale and what impacts morale. So it wasn't like, okay, you people don't respect your students. It's, it's, this is the teacher and the constituents rotate around the teacher. So if we're only asking for a, for five constituent bases, then we're not really getting a full picture. But I'm not gonna make an argument for or against it. I do think it's important, but...
And that, that's fine. I'm just bringing up my observations of things that I thought places maybe it could be cut down a little bit because I'm fearful that this was too long.
Is there a teacher, maybe not in this district, that we know that would, could run through this real quick?
I asked a couple of people to go through it.
And?
And they said, I wish my district would do it.
How long did it take them to do it?
Um, I didn't even ask that. I just said, would you, would you give it a shot and tell me what you think? And she just said, I wish my district would do it. And I left it at that. I should have asked how long. Didn't even think to do that.
Well, no, I mean, this looks so much easier than the stuff that we've been getting forward and we get. I mean, I, it's not as cumbersome and it's, it seems more direct.
I think we should, you know, unless there's a section in here that, you know, and in all fairness to the rest of the people on the committee and to Michael, we went through and identified buckets of content before we even looked at questions. We were like, what are the things that we need to know about in order to build a baseline? And that's what those were. questions. We were like, what are the things that we need to know about in order to build a baseline? And that's what those were. But I would recommend that we put it forth as it is. If people don't want to answer the whole thing, they don't have to answer the whole thing. What we get back in this first one is going to be very telling as far as where do we go next year? Do we include? Do we not include? Do we not even do it?
If it was something we did all the time, then it, you know, if you look at it, you're going to be like, ugh, there's a lot of it somewhere, well. But it's not something we're sending out all the time. I, you know, I thought those little five-minute ones were more annoying sometimes. You know, the five-question ones you got once a week?
Oh yeah.
And I just felt like there wasn't a whole lot of value in them because it was like.
Yeah, we gotta go.
Well, just, I don't know. It's long, but it seems very well thought out. And I think once you start reading into it, you, I know you're doing it because we want the information.
Well, the worst part. The worst, the longest and the worst part is just this opening, which is fine.
Because you have to think about, you can't just kind of, yeah, move through it.
Um, can you make it mandatory?
Can you make it mandatory?
So it's all voluntary. So what guarantee do they have that it's, that's anonymous?
It's done through survey, well, I don't know yet, Michael.
Yeah, we're looking into that. So it'll be done by an off-site provider, which we agree is probably something we should do for that, just that purpose.
Yeah, survey muck is really easy.
Another place that maybe there could be a little condensation, that doesn't sound right because it's like moisture, but the open-ended questions at the end of each section.
Yep.
They're so broad that could we do that once or twice and not every section?
Not for us.
Like.
I feel like no. Just because.
What are we going to do with that information?
I just think a lot of them won't answer it if they don't want it, which is fine.
There's going to be a lot of non-answers on, on the open-ended questions, yes. But for the particular, the particular staff member who feels very strongly about something, this gives not only them a chance to air this, whatever they feel very strongly about, but it, it gives us a little insight into, into, you know, where, where the focus is. I think, I, I think if we see a lot of open-ended, open-answer questions in a particular subset of the survey, we can say, well, wow, that is, that's a
An emotional thing.
That's, yeah, that right now is really drawing a lot of focus of the staff and I, I didn't know that, or, you know, we didn't really know that. And, and just like with any survey, like the parent surveys and the student surveys, I, I do think that just having the open-ended question, they're going to get skipped over. But for the people who feel really, really strongly about it, they don't have to write at the end of the, they don't have to go all the way to the end of the survey and write a fifteen paragraph thing. They have fifteen other spots in which to say.
Having an open-ended response at the end of a section allows us to identify that that open-ended response belongs to that section. Whereas if you only have one or two open-ended sections, you're not really quite sure where, you can kind of pick through. But this allows, like Nicole said, skip over if you don't want to answer, but if you do, we know you mean, you mean that statement based on training and development. So that's really why.
And I think you're going to find the, the number of years that they've done there. I would think that they would have less.
Oh, I bet.
Because if, I mean, if I'm just starting.
And what's going to happen with, these are answered online? And it's tabulated by the survey monkey or whatever? And then and then the sum, there's a summary of their open response questions?
Yep.
And then who gets this? Who reads it? What do we do with it?
Well, what, that's two different questions. So who gets it? Are the people that have access codes to this survey? So that's.
Who would that be?
So, well, it's certainly going to be the policy committee, probably should be, Lita, Michael should have access to seeing that.
I think this information we'll want for district improvement, design pieces. And I think ultimately it should be public.
Well, yeah, we'll have to compile all the data and, and report out on it, I would think.
Well, and that's the second part of your question. So I would not recommend putting all the raw data out online. I would recommend that we sit down and you, similar to what Julie said a couple of weeks ago, trust the policy subcommittee to look at where are, you know, I mean, analyze the data, look at the data by location, function, years, and see if there are any patterns. You've got to be able to tell them, these are the things that you said are really concerning, these are the things that you said we are really proud of. And, and when you report back on things that are concerning, we have to be able to say, not just, yeah, we'll do something about it, it's, we're going to integrate this into law. That has to happen.
If this works, do you see something more similar to this going out to the parents? Because I would think that.
Oh god, I'm not doing that one.
Oh, no. Because I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, a first-time parent going in would have totally different answers than a third-time parent. You know, because totally different experience for each kid and totally different set of expectations.
I think one thing, you know, just all that you said before, that, although you may not want to put the raw data out there, I think the raw data would be a public record, so if that's your concern.
Is it? Well, we have to make it available.
We should probably get a pub, public records law clarification before we do it.
Didn't Dorothy say that you'd have to make it available, you don't have to post it?
Oh, you don't have to post it, but if somebody asks for it.
Oh yeah, definitely. Well, if somebody asks for it, I wouldn't.
If somebody asks for the raw data, you should always assume, which is fine, I don't think it's necessarily a problem, but you should be aware of it. If someone asks for the raw data, you should just assume everybody will have it, because that's someone that usually.
Going to share it.
The press.
Yeah.
And therefore they'll.
You just gave her.
She's gone. But this just happens, and that's, that's not a secret, you know what I mean? There'd be a link to, you know, all the raw data. So if that's what you want to do, that's fine. But I think if you don't want that, we should at least try to find out ahead of time in opposed to sometimes.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, why we'd want to hide whatever.
I don't think so either, but I just.
Because even the, the identifying information doesn't go so far as to identify.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, no, I agree. But I just heard they wanted a summary, but I just know from past experience that the raw data can be requested more likely.
So Annie, thanks for the feedback, Nancy. What else you got? Did you even look at it?
Me? Yes, I did. I looked at it before I came here. I can't see a darn thing right now.
But we still have, I mean, we have another round, right? And we probably.
But it sounds like we're close.
That's why the computer is over here and I'm sitting like this.
Um, yeah. And we'll also learn a lot from, you know, if we only get three teachers who go all the way through it.
That's telling off.
That's, that's a, that's a lot of, that tells a lot.
When is this going out?
We hope in March.
And it'll be open thirty days or?
No. Or we say two weeks?
When we said two weeks, yeah, because it was well, really well timed. It was really.
Hey, it's alright.
That's four.
I'm done. Your allotment?
I'm done for the month?
No. Flipping year. Well, wait, the timing really made sense because I think your suggestion was to do it over.
Try to push it out there in conferences.
Yeah.
Get it done before it breaks, so it's clean.
Well, the only concern I have is, I know that when all of those notices came in for survey, I mean, it was, it just kind of got bunged out. Because we have not had traditionally, remember, the responses. So do the teachers get different, since I've never really had a survey before, do they, would they get a different type of notification as out there?
Oh, the promotional, so she's talking about awareness.
There's going to be a, an email, a letter.
So we hope the teachers read the emails more better than parents do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a much better response.
Yeah.
I hope so, I hope it's better than fifty.
Fifty percent?
Well, we want better than fifty.
We'd be getting fifty.
I'd be happy.
No, I know, but that's comparing.
If you're setting it to work, you're like, it's a different situation.
I would be happy with fifty.
Oh, I would too.
Really, but.
Fifty would be great. If you think it's part of your work thing you're supposed to do, you're going to do it.
Right.
More likely than a parent who, you know, is like, eh, another email from.
I think the most important thing for the success of this is whether they fill out half of it or all of it or, you know, seven questions, I think the success of this is going to be dependent upon if we mean it and we deliver and they believe that it's anonymous.
Yeah.
That's it.
Is there any way to find out, like, if people have it through, like, if you put up for two weeks and after one week, is there anybody to see how many responses you've had?
Yes, you can keep, you can go in and check.
So at that point, you could actually like nudge the, it's supposed to say, can you, or send another?
Send another poll.
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because this could be really.
Good work, ladies. Well? And gentlemen, oh, I'm so sorry. I felt like you got like way too many.
Alright, we've got to end with your britches. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Is there anything else on it?
Oh, there are other things on it, yes.
There are, nothing, nothing at first, I see.
Like your policies, second reading, we didn't get to.
Well, are you going to, did the space study report out?
We didn't do superintendent's report, we didn't do any subcommittee reports.
We did the superintendent's part.
Oh, one thing we have to do, consent agenda. Um, warrants of January thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and the minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. If nobody speaks up now, we will assume they are approved. Okay, great, that's done. What, what did somebody just say that we needed to do? Was there something?
Task, the, the space study.
Space study? Did you have something to share with us?
Um, we had another very productive meeting. And we went, had, Bill Cleary came and went through all of the major systems in the building. It was so informative. He pretty much said that a lot of the systems that we have in place, Maureen and Lynn were there too, so jump in. They're okay as long as we don't make renovations to the building because then we fall out of code and things like that.
Well, he said, he said major renovations and that equals about ten to fifty classrooms. He, he actually specified, so what makes major is that ten to fifteen classrooms. So that was the increase. And then we'd start affecting the systems.
So, and then we looked at Bob Skansky, who's on the task force, has kind of taken point on, I don't know.
Scheduling.
Scheduling? You wanted to do the scheduling.
I think that's going to be great.
Well, no, see, now you, now you like me because, alright.
I know, but it had to do with science, the science labs. Specifically, didn't it?
I think it's probably.
Well, he's going to start there, but I think he's going to.
He is going to start with the science labs.
Yeah.
And then he's going to try to help with that. But he also put forth a document that was written and then pulled in some of Michael's stuff that was written to identify what are the top five areas of concern, the questions we have, and the next steps to address those, those questions. And that will all kind of be pulled into an interim report. Is that accurate?
But it was modified based on, so he seems to get to come back and actually present it.
Yeah. But it's operating like a really nice committee and everybody's getting involved and people are voting and we have minutes now and it's, it's good.
And do we know, not to be pushy, but do we, do we know when we are going to be shown something, talked to about the plans?
Well, the interim report, when that's finally.
Yeah, I think it's very possible at our next school committee meeting, we should have that document.
But something came up that we don't know if it's going to get bumped up or not, and that's, we know that the science labs are an issue. But as we were talking, one of the problems for the space was the fact that the the non-traditional electives are now becoming almost core. And so we were wondering if maybe we had to redefine what we were. So, you know, if we're going to be comprehensive, that could be, you know, a clash for every elective. So we have to kind of figure out how we're going to, what we're going to be. Because that will dictate how big this school is going to be.
This space study committee has taken on the world.
See, no, they don't feel that that's their responsibility. It's, it's, the, the school, the, you know, you know, they're bumping it back up to us.
I don't think that the vision high school should be.
You know, what are we going to be when we grow up?
Yeah, I don't either. I mean, I think, I think we've already said what we are, right? A comprehensive high school that.
But we don't know what then, does that mean every child gets every class that they ask for? What does that mean?
Plenty of, I don't know, I don't know, Lynn, I, I just.
It could dictate the size of the school.
But those are the questions that are coming up, right?
Because that's, when it comes to the size, I mean, the, the science is, is definitely an issue, but what's really pushing this is that the core classes are changing.
So we need to have, well, we, I think when, when the interim report is done, it needs to address that. And I think it will. Because I think some of those questions were in a document, the question in next step document, right?
No, because that's.
So sometime this spring we'll.
It will be, yeah, I think we might be able to release it by February twenty fifth.
Really?
Well, the interim.
Good, more meeting.
Go with any of those of the five, but that wasn't.
It's bigger than a breadbox, it's much bigger. The implications, because in order to assign space, you have to know what you want to put in that space. In order to know what you want to put in that space, you have to know how, how it falls out of the, the, what is the word I'm looking for?
The program of studies.
Yeah. Yeah, right?
Attend program, yeah. If I may comment as another member of the task force, like, one of the places that, that members are finding themselves is, while they could be negative about all growth and decide, well, you should change your curriculum, we don't support having so many classes. Then the other extreme is, we want bountiful opportunity for all our kids, we support a bountifully large school to accommodate that. But that's a policy question that some members don't feel comfortable speaking to at all. Yet you need to have that policy in order to make a determination as to what your, what is the demand that this program, this curriculum is placing on the facility.
Got to learn your policy.
I am going, sorry.
You want, you still want to control everything, here you go.
This is this big.
It's going to dictate a lot.
Alright.
Perfect girlfriend.
Um, Michael, did you have anything from here?
The, the only thing I just want to, of note, and while we're still on television, I just want to send our condolences to the Farnsworth family and recognize that it was a very solemn occasion on Saturday for the ceremony at St. Leo's. The church was packed, it was, it was nice to see so many young adults in the room, our faculty were there. And I know the event afterwards, the celebration of life, was exactly what it was supposed to be. And I heard a lot of great stories from that event as well. So I think she had a nice way to remember.
Anybody have any, um, agenda items for next meeting?
Well, next, you mean the one after the.
After the election.
You mean after the, yeah, so like a month from now?
Yeah, probably not, which is fine.
It might be easier to, we could think of something, have something after that. It might be more efficient. Um, is it a good one, school choice?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know how we proceed with that. It's usually been, school choice, should we be putting that on the agenda? It's usually been in this policy committee.
Yeah.
Oh, good, put it in policy.
Julie's face. Grandma's dead, told you.
What'd you say?
Grandma's dead.
I mean, we can put it in policy for, for March.
That's what we usually do, but it doesn't mean we have to, if, if you'd rather have the full committee.
Oh, that goes against what Julie said a couple of weeks ago.
Hey, you know, all I have to say is you better remember this, when you want to get your little pesky hands in every little thing we do, they're going to come right after you and say, listen.
Trust us, trust us.
All I want is the vote, I just want the vote.
Yeah.
So, does that mean policy should tackle this first?
It's always done it, why not?
Okay.
Yeah, it's always going to be policy first.
It's whether you want to change it or not, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to do.
I mean, the way it's written right now.
But then it will still have to come to the full committee.
Right, it always does anyway, doesn't it?
Right. Okay, so, somebody is putting that on the agenda for the. Okay, so, somebody is putting that on the agenda for the policy subcommittee. Okay, excellent. I think all we need is a final motion.
I hope that we be free during this meeting. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.